All right, council members, please take your seats. I think that's fine. All right, it's 5:54. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Kraschnowski.
Here.
Mr. Liscavich.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith. Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
You have 10 of 11.
Okay, we'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for MHDS. Please note, this is only a public comment session for the proposed ordinance right now. Is there anybody for public comment on the MHDS ordinance? Anybody on the Zoom? I know there's a ton of slips here, but I'm pretty sure none of them have anything to do with this. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, first public hearing is adjourned. We'll now move right into the second public hearing. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Kraschnowski.
Here.
Mr. Liscavich.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith. Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
10 of 11.
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for the Luzerne County multimodal. Anybody for public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. We'll restart with the voting session at 6:01. Thank you. All right, council members, it's 6:01 PM. I'd like to call the voting session to order. We've already had the roll call, and I mean, we've already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Kraschnowski. Mr. Liscavich.
Here.
Ms. McDermott. Mr. Perry. Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
All present.
We have several proclamations. You have the other three, right?
The three were out there.
Oh, okay. All right, never mind. We have one proclamation. For Suicide Prevention Month.
That would stem in the future. And as far as the bridges that are being taken care of by the interest, I would, Mr. Chair, I would encourage that council and the county manager look into utilizing the municipal authorities that we have, like the redevelopment authority, industrial development authority, as leverage to look into getting federal and state grants for the capital budget, to replenish the capital budget for those roads and bridges that are needed, the other roads and bridges that are needed to be taken care of. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items only? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2024 voting session?
So moved.
Patty and Brittany. All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll now move into the agenda. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for MHDs.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Sorry. Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number two, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County multimodal.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to adopt the resolution requesting a statewide local share account grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the Huntsville Extension.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution regarding recommendations from the county's risk management, Zigman and Company, the Zigman Company regarding security bond work session limits to protect against risk of loss for calendar year 2025.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution in a contract with Elite Revenue Solutions LLC for the collection of delinquent real estate tax services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving a contract with Michael Baker International Incorporated to perform the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
On the question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
I agree with comments by Mr. Raybo that the Hazelton watershed area should be included in that plan. So I hope they do include that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It will.
Okay, thank you, Manager Crocomo. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number seven, motion regarding the clerk of council and the government study commission. I have the language for the motion, so I will, I'll make it. I'd like to move that Luzerne County Council authorize Sharon Lawrence to assist the government study commission by attending and recording meetings, posting agenda and minutes to the website, advertising meetings, and reserving the council room and other duties as requested by the government study commission. As Sharon performs these functions for county council, she is authorized to also assist the study commission. Sharon will be compensated by the government study commission as appropriately budgeted and docketed in time and attendance.
Second. On the question.
Go ahead.
I'm all in favor of Ms. Lawrence assisting the government study commission in those duties. The thing that concerns me, that's not actually a job description, was it? It's just, the thing that concerns me is the language where it says other duties, as required by the government study commission. I'm wondering how much they could add on and pile on along the way.
Right. So my, my understanding is that essentially she'd be performing the same duties that she does for county council, just for the government study commission. You know, there were a number of things that she does that aren't exactly listed in that motion. You know, she says that she posts the, you know, it said she posts the agenda, but she also creates the agenda for the, for the study commission and other, other things of that nature. So that's why there is some ambiguity in, in the end. Yeah, there's, there's nothing that she'd be doing that's anything out of, out of the realm of what you'd do essentially for council. And, and I, I personally have spoke to Ms. Lawrence about this. She said she's okay with taking on the extra responsibility. And, I mean, this is not what it is, so do not, I, I don't want to, I'm not misspeaking when I say this, but she, I, I basically said she should treat it as though it's another, of, another one of our ABCs that she does that type of stuff for. So, you know, that's pretty much what it is.
On the question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So, so the format then is essentially she's going to be a subcontractor? She's going to contract her, or will she be paid through the county? Will the commission reimburse the county, or?
The commission will have to reimburse the county.
So it'll be through the county payroll office that that, that'll happen, that it has extra duties?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Very good.
Yeah. And if you want the specifics on that, we can, we can discuss that further.
No, I mean, the, the important thing, it's okay with Ms. Lawrence that she's not taking on undue responsibilities and hardships, so.
And, and Mr. Chair.
I just want to make sure it was.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, that, Mr. Haas's question, just raised a question in my mind, so if she's being paid through the county payroll and her hours between the government study commission and the normal hours here of her council clerk duties, if they turn into 50, 60 hours a week, does she get paid overtime?
Uh, I would say, I don't believe so, but Ms. Roselle, do you have a comment to make on that?
I think that's really an interesting question, but it's, um, the, the, you know.
Right.
Well, would she be an exempt employee or not?
So.
She is now, right? So no overtime? Right. So it would probably be the same.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any, Ms. McDermott, do you have a question?
I was, Mr. Haas already asked.
Oh, okay. All right, any other questions by council members?
I just have one more, sorry, I don't want to belabor this, but, so she already put in significant hours with the study commission? Can she be compensated for that time? Will that cover that as well? Because essentially she's been working for them.
Yeah.
And there are funds for that. It's a very appropriate use, but I think, I think it's warranted that she gets paid and compensated for those hours.
Right, I believe, I believe that's, that's been part of the conversation.
Oh, very good. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Well, we, we will provide retro time, not only for Ms. Lawrence, but for our IT and our sheriffs.
Even better, Ms. Crocomo, thank you.
That's wonderful to know.
Thank you.
Right. Any other question?
And, and Mary Roselle, and Harry Skeen.
Not this Harry.
Okay.
The other Harry.
Any other questions by council members? Oh, I apologize, Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. Skeen, just a question, is there any conflict of interest with her working both for the government and the government that she is studying?
No, she will not be making any policy decisions.
No, she will not be making any policy decisions. And whatever they are doing, they'll have separate mail, they won't have access to council chambers, so it'll be completely, the duties will be approximately the same, but there'll be a demarcation between the two positions.
Mr. Sabatino?
Has the solicitor for the government study commission, does he concur with your assessment?
I believe he was consulted.
He was, but my, my assessment of.
Allowing Ms. Lawrence to, to share, to share Ms. Lawrence for the government study commission, like, he doesn't see any objection to it.
He requested it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number eight, motion to adopt the resolution allocating American Rescue Plan interest funds for use to replace the Harris Hill Road Bridge in Kingston Township.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
There's a motion and a second. Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Just for the clarification, this motion is to authorize $1.9 million towards the Harris Hill Road Bridge project.
That is correct. All right. On the question, anybody? Roll call.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Let's get bridges done, yes.
And Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number nine, motion to adopt the resolution allocating American Rescue Plan interest funds for use to replace the Sleepy Hollow Bridge in Butler Township.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Likewise, for the clarification, this is authorizing $1.2 million towards this bridge project. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move into public comment on non-agenda items. I do have several slips up here. I also would like to say, I know that there are a lot of people in the audience that have comments they'd like to make on certain issues, and certainly you're free to do, do so. I would only ask that if there are members in the audience that are not from Luzerne County, could you please allow Luzerne County members, residents, and taxpayers to speak first, and then you can speak after them? First up, I have Mr. Venus. I think he's outside.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Mr. Lombardo, if you could let me know when I'm on the clock.
All right. Can you state your name and your municipality, please?
Carl Venus, Hanover Township.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Chairman Lombardo, Vice Chairman Thornton, members of council, Manager Crocomo. Generally, I try to stay out of this stuff as much as possible, but tonight I wanted to come down and essentially repeat something I've heard Controller Griffith say many times when I was on council, which is the word kudos. Kudos to you, Manager Crocomo, for doing what you felt was in the best interests of the county, despite the fact that you may not agree with everything. Kudos to you for putting the county first. I make no secret, I opposed the drop boxes when I was on council. I opposed the drop boxes then, I oppose the drop boxes now. I believe that they were put into place to be a temporary measure. They were never intended to be permanent. We are now four years out from the worst of the pandemic. At this point, I mean, look around the room. What about this room looks like it did back in 2020, when these measures were put in place? When you go to the grocery store, when you live your general daily life, what is it the same? Nothing. Except for when it comes to the electoral system. It seems like then we have to keep the same procedures in place. So I am about to be 37 years old. I have lived through, or I'm going into my 38th year of elections. I think the first 33 of them, we had no ballot drop boxes. And everyone who wanted to vote was able to vote. There are alternates available. My grandmother voted in person until she was about, in her late 70s, when she just couldn't do it anymore. At that point, she went and she got an absentee ballot, and she was able to vote that way. It's just completely mind-boggling that we still think we need these things. There's no reason for it. Now, I know a term that gets put out there a lot is disenfranchising voters. My answer is always a question, how? How is this disenfranchising voters? We have election day in-person voting, as we did previously, absentee ballots. Now, we have mail-in ballots. All you have to do is put a stamp on your ballot and put it in the mailbox. How is that disenfranchising anyone? And as far as, I think I read in the paper today with regards to, you know, what about the people who want to vote the week before? Those same people were able to vote in every election prior to 2020. I just don't see the issue. Now, you have to balance that against the need for us, as a county, to have fair and secure elections. That's important. And the manager, she's the one who has to face these decisions. She's the one who has to come up against these security concerns that us, as the public, probably don't even know everything about.
Thank you, Mr. Venus.
And just real quick, great to see you all, Manager Crocomo. Keep doing an awesome job. You're awesome. Great work, great work, all of you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, Philip C. Dale. Mr. Dale? I think he's outside. Okay. All right, Mr. Dale.
Oh, thank you very much. My apologies.
Can you just state your name and municipality, please?
Oh, Philip Dale. D as in dog, A-L-E.
Okay. Your municipality?
Apologies before, I didn't understand the process, but I'm here to discuss the voting in this great nation of ours. We have a wonderful opportunity to cast a ballot for a candidate of our choice. The integrity of that voting system is extremely important, and I think is, to some degree, in jeopardy across the nation, not only in our own communities, in our own county, but across the nation. So it's important for us to keep a close eye on that. Ballot drop boxes are an open opportunity for some disruption of, of the integrity of that system. There are, as the prior speaker had, had mentioned, there are many ways in order to cast a ballot and to have it casted as one person, one vote for candidates of choice. Ballot boxes open the opportunity for ballot harvesting, along with other fraudulent activities that can take place in our system. So I think it's very, very important for us to consider, you know, how we do that. So you might say, oh, well, they're safe. They're everything in our voting system. We've heard it repeatedly in our media, that, that our voting system is, is perfectly fine. There is no fraud, there's no issues, there's no concerns. Take a look at your voter rolls across the state of Pennsylvania. We are not very good at managing our voter rolls. Look at the state of Texas. They just reviewed, look at the state of Virginia, they just reviewed, and look how many people have been taken off of voter rolls. So we don't do a very good job of this very, very important thing called voting in this great nation of ours. So I think we need to step up and attention to what we are doing. Working the polling stations, if you're a brand-new voter, do you have to present an ID? If you change address, you have to present an ID? If you drop your, your vote in a ballot box, do you have to present an ID? No, you don't. You just have to drop it in that drop box. So, so there's not a consistency across the board. I want to thank everybody for the hard work that you do. We appreciate what you're doing. Let's clean things up and move forward and keep this great, great nation what we, what we want it to be, and vote for the candidate of your choice.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Mr. Darto?
I'm Martin Darto from Wilkes-Barre City. I want to take this. To first, thank each and every individual who fought tremendously hard to turn this county from blue to red. Our work that we put out there every single day had made a difference. Crocomo, thank you for pushing forward and taking out the drop boxes. There's been many issues against each and every one of us who are here today. We know the history of our county throughout the entire country. Luzerne County has been known for corruption, stealing, and what is losing, shortage of paper. Now it's time that we will continue to push forward, and we say no to drop boxes. And whoever disagrees, we will continue to fight because the integrity of the election, we are at the crucial point in our national history. And November 5th, the rest will become history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darto. Lisa Npersky? Ms. Npersky?
Sorry, I was in the cheap seats. Thanks for taking my comment.
Just your, your municipality, ma'am.
Fairview Township.
Okay, thank you.
I live in Mountain Top, where it's not only been difficult finding a location for a drop box, but there's also recently been a scramble to actually find a polling location for the upcoming election. And the reason is fearmongering, and that's very sad. Firehalls and churches who have long been proud to serve their communities in this way are becoming afraid to open their doors to voters because they're being told they have to worry about lawsuits and threats of violence. So chalk one up for the fearmongers. I truly appreciate and understand that the county has a duty to keep election workers and others safe. And on that point, I hope the Election Worker Protection Ordinance recently introduced by Councilwoman Bryn Smith is wholeheartedly and unanimously support it. But having said that, it's my understanding that it's our election board and not the county manager that should have the final say on drop boxes. Some have said that banning drop boxes is an effort to disenfranchise voters based on false claims of widespread fraud, and it's true, many voters will be disenfranchised if drop boxes are banned. But let's be clear, this is more than just a way to disenfranchise voters. Sadly, there's a band of election deniers alive and well in Luzerne County who aren't just trying to make it harder for people to vote, they're trying to undermine the entire election process. And if drop boxes are banned, there's no doubt in my mind, they'll move on to the next target and find yet another way to frighten everyone and generate chaos and distrust. Unfortunately, Pennsylvania does not allow early voting, and many people, for many reasons, can't get to their polling location on election day. Ballot drop boxes have been a convenience for voters of all political affiliation, every age and occupation, retirees, seniors, and disabled people. I have faith that Luzerne County can provide the security measures necessary to allow safe access to drop boxes at the very limited locations previously approved by the Board of Elections. And I worry that if drop boxes are banned due to fearmongering, then the vigilantes and fearmongers win and democracy suffers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Beth Gilbert.
Hello, Beth Gilbert, Wilkes-Barre. I'm here tonight on behalf of over 300 Luzerne County voters who have signed a petition opposing the elimination of mail ballot drop boxes. These voters believe, as I do, that drop boxes are not just a convenience, they are a vital tool for safe and secure voting, especially for those with limited access. In addition to the petition, I'm presenting a letter from the PA Voters Decide Coalition, signed by 27 statewide organizations, that strongly advocates for the reinstatement of drop boxes. These organizations understand the critical role drop boxes play in providing safe and reliable voting access. I'm also presenting a letter from the ACLU of Pennsylvania, which underscores that the county manager's decision overstepped her position. Both the Pennsylvania Election Code and the Luzerne County Home Rule Charter clearly state that only the Board of Elections has the authority to make election administration decisions, and the board has already approved the use of drop boxes for this year. All the documents that I'm presenting today make it abundantly clear that drop boxes are essential to Luzerne County's elections. The county manager's decision to remove drop boxes will disenfranchise too many of our voters who depend on them to cast their ballot, not to mention that the decision itself bypasses our county's election policies. To move them now, only 42 days away from the election, does not put Luzerne County on the side of voters or free, fair, and accessible elections. It begs the question, whose side are you on? I urge the council and the county manager to listen to their constituents, the voters of Luzerne County. Drop boxes have been securely used since 2020, and removing them now creates unnecessary barriers to voting, particularly for seniors, people with disabilities, working people, and others who rely on them to cast their ballots. Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have Ms. Cerniak.
Audrey Cerniak from Plains Township, good evening. I'm here to speak against the removal of all the drop boxes in Luzerne County. While I understand that there are increased security concerns regarding this election, and I commend the county manager for all of the security planning taking place, I think the drop box issue should have been brought before the public several months ago and not forced on us at this last minute. This lack of transparency is regrettable. I ask that the county manager revisit her decision and come up with a security plan for drop boxes in Penn Place and Hazelton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cerniak. Next up, we have Karen Baronoski.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Baronoski from Wilkes-Barre. And I just have a few things to say in favor of keeping at least some of the drop boxes. And County Manager Crocomo, I've always really respected your dedication to the people of our county and your wise judgments. But today, I'm asking you to listen, to citizens, please, to reverse or at least partially modify your decision to get rid of the boxes so late in the process. And I have attended county council meetings and election board a few times the past few years and witnessed the blatant assault of free and fair elections by some citizens promoting stolen election lies, conspiracy theories, never ceasing unsubstantiated allegations to drop boxes. One council member even recommended the fallacious 2000 Mules conspiracy movie. That was an election board, it was not doing it during the council. But we're the center of the 2024 election universe. And Pennsylvania is the center, and Luzerne County is the bullseye that may decide our election. We know from Jamie Walsh's that three or four votes decided it. So if there's some citizens, people don't pay attention. They're going to think, oh, I'm going to drop my ballot off in the drop box, which isn't there because they don't get the newspaper, they don't pay attention. And then they're going to miss, and it could change the whole thing. And I think there's a big deal about this drop box because I witnessed some of our group of citizens with opposing views. We were holding a press conference outside on the grounds. And they even brought a bullhorn, and we could hardly be heard. There was even a woman going for surgery, and I thought at least she would be treated with respect. No, she had a say to them. They said, well, go to the, you know, vote. And she said, I'm going to be in the hospital, is what she had to answer. This poor lady who barely walked there.
Members of the public, please, members of the public. Members of the public, please.
Denise Williams, there we go. Denise Williams just recommended keeping two of the boxes. I think the Penn Plaza, I always vote there, there's nobody around, there's a security guard inside. If we could keep some of them at least. And I'm asking everyone and anybody involved to rethink this decision. We have to show some courage and not cave to a group of loud or belligerent disruptors. And I also support the election integrity bill, you know, that they also mentioned being decided. So thank you for listening, Mateen. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Members of the public, Mr. Darto, please. If I have to warn you again, I'm going to have you removed. Please be respectful of the other members, okay? They were respectful for you. Please be respectful to the other members of the public. They were respectful to you. I'm asking you to be respectful to them as well. That's all I'm asking. Mr. Knapp.
Ron Knapp from Nanticoke, Pennsylvania. I wanted to just enlighten the, by the way, thank you Chairman Lombardo and Vice Chair Thornton and all council members and Manager Crocomo. In regards to the Home Rule Charter Article 2 Legislative Branch, County Council, Section 217 states, "No member of County Council or committee or employee thereof shall publicly or privately give directions or orders to the county manager, any employee of the executive branch, the controller, district attorney, or any employee of their office." I bring this tight because of the circumstance with her that would be county manager's decision, which I wholeheartedly agree with. And I agree with it because there is no guarantee for the security of those drop boxes. And The Times Leader reported September 4th that data was lost at surveillance recording at Wright Manor Dropbox from April 23rd's primary election. And in my opinion, it is impossible to make sure that all the drop boxes, when they were in place, had a succinct pattern of flow with regards to motion detection or the same standard as the security cameras would be set up. There's, it is impossible, and there's always that chance for data loss. And so because of that, I have been a proponent of getting rid of them right from the beginning. My opinion, they are a threat to the sovereignty of the United States. And I thank you for your time, for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Next up, we have Ms. Malchamis, Cindy Malchamis.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Cindy Malchamis from Dallas. So this entire topic is distressing for me. I really don't understand why this is still a topic that keeps surfacing. We have used drop boxes in Luzerne County for several years now. Although there are people who continue to spread the idea that there were issues with our election because of the drop boxes, that's not true. We've had fair and honest elections despite what some naysayers like to promote. Reacting to a threat when you're in the right is never a good idea. Taking away the few drop boxes we do in Luzerne County will not solve anything. In fact, I'm going to predict that the naysayers will come after another way to prohibit voters from the right to vote in Luzerne County, should this not be rectified. Excuse me. After all, this is voter suppression, pure and simple. The elderly, the service workers, CNAs, people who don't have the ability to take off work to go to vote, these are the people who's going to suffer. Marginalized people who cannot get to the polls or who work different hours than is available to drop off a ballot to the Election Bureau or to vote in person will suffer. Please don't give in to the threats and scare tactics. Let's allow all of Luzerne County the ability to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Thornton, Robert Thornton.
Good evening, council members and Madam County Manager Crocomo. I'm Robert Thornton, property owner in West Pittston. All for making it easier and convenient to vote, but not easier to cheat. The recent decision to eliminate the drop boxes in this county has been long overdue. They have been proven repeatedly to be a source of cheating and ballot stuffing. Our own former director of the County Election Bureau, Mike Sussex, while working through the lobby of Penn Place two years ago, witnessed a woman drop four ballots in the drop box. Although he warned her not to do it, she did it anyway with no legal repercussions. Two years ago, the district attorney of Lehigh County performed an exhaustive investigation, revealing over 200 incidents of people stuffing and dropping multiple ballots in the drop boxes. Are we in Luzerne County to believe in the law of large numbers that the score is Lehigh County 200 violations, Luzerne County zero? And 200 violations in just 27 counties is 5,400 fraudulent votes? That's assuming one stuffed per ballot, and it can totally turn an election around. Let me remind everyone here that there is no Pennsylvania law authorizing the use of drop boxes in our state. The boxes were a suggestion during the spread of COVID only in 2020 by an unelected appointee of Governor Wolf. It was an emergency measure to help stop the spread of the virus. The unelected appointee was Kathy Bookbar, who later resigned in disgrace. The left-leaning Supreme Court of Pennsylvania later offered a court opinion which said counties could decide for themselves if they want to continue to use the boxes. This was an opinion of a court, not a law. There still remains no law. The Pennsylvania Legislature must pass a law. It lies in their hands. And I heard the term "no proof" bandied about continuously. Even eyewitness accounts, affidavits, and videotaped evidence are not considered proof in the eyes of the opposition. How could there be any proof unless you have a person monitoring every drop box 24/7? And any place the 24/7 monitoring was suggested or enacted, cries of intimidation and voter suppression are heard loudly. Why would any lawful, proud, registered voter be intimidated to simply cast a lawful ballot? No, it's the fraudsters who intimidate it, not permit it to carry on the ballot stuffing they so enjoyed and they so desperately need now. They feel the wall is closing in. In these volatile and dangerous times, I want to applaud the nonpartisan decision of Madam County Manager Crocomo. She shows unwavering courage and true leadership, which this county so desperately needs. Thank you, Madam County Manager Crocomo.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gavi Shapiro.
Gavi Shapiro, Kingston. So first, I'd like to say thank you to Manager Crocomo. I know this was not an easy decision. I know that you've had a pile of bricks, or I assume you've had a pile of bricks dumped on your head since you made it with various statements to the news, et cetera. So I'm just letting you know, we appreciate it. Appreciate you taking the heat for that. Next, I'd like to mention is Beth, who spoke here earlier. Was a previous acting election director. And she was in charge when there was over 40 precincts that ran out of paper during an election. She goes on and on, talking about how important it is that everyone gets to vote and, you know, not to disenfranchise. And yet, when she was in charge, we had paper gate. You know, this was under her purview. So I think it's very ironic that she's speaking on that. Next is over the past 100 years, we've all voted, you know, in different ways, but there's never been these drop boxes. This was a temporary measure. And, you know, the hope, thank God, COVID situation is larger, you know, is over. So the drop boxes should be as well. Another previous speaker mentioned that there's early voting isn't allowed in Luzerne County or in Pennsylvania. That's, you know, that's not true at all. I've actually cast an early vote. It's not at a polling station. I've been down to the Election Bureau, and they get, and I requested a ballot. I filled out the ballot, I handed it to them, I voted early. You know, they're mentioning about disenfranchising voters. How many mailboxes between each of these people's houses and the drop boxes that existed are open 24/7? They say elderly people, service workers, there's mailboxes all over. And we have mail-in voting in this state. That's just how it works. So this is just, this is an additional measure so that they can do ballot stuffing and get away with it. And, yeah, I thank you very much for ending this practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Robin Kocian?
Robin Kocian, Dallas Township. As frequently expressed with numerous other concerned voters, we do not support mail-in voting drop boxes, which invite fraud rather than secure elections. This is not voter suppression as some claim. On the contrary, the county manager's decision works toward restoring public trust by ensuring only one vote is legally entered per eligible voter. Voting drop boxes were only to be used as a temporary measure during COVID, which required social distancing for health reasons. Since mail-in ballots still exist, voter access is not hindered. They keep crying about this, but they have mail-in ballots. There is no voter disenfranchisement by getting rid of drop boxes. It's unthinkable that drop boxes have been used in several county elections without anyone monitoring the video surveillance footage or verifying that the person dropping in more than one box had the required authorization form. If the Election Bureau insists on supplying a drop box at Penn Place, who will verify the legality of someone depositing multiple ballots? Critical security issues along with increased staffing and costs to the taxpayer override drop box convenience and validate why all drop boxes must be eliminated. It is also why the county must stop fighting the judge's orders to allow public viewing of past surveillance footage via right-to-know requests. Contrary to the opposition's comment, eliminating drop boxes near the election has no bearing since mail-in ballots have not even been sent yet. Responsible voters still have time to plan how they will vote, whether it's by mailing or hand-delivering their ballot to the Election Bureau or making the effort to vote in person. If a voter can drive to a drop box, they can drive to the polls or put a stamp on their ballot. It's that simple. We applaud the county manager's decision and implore County Council to fully support her efforts for working toward restoring voter and election integrity in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kocian. Joseph Nowakowski?
Good evening, council. My name is Joseph Nowakowski from Kingston. I am definitely against the ballot drop boxes. I am very thankful that they have been removed as of this time. Everything that I was going to state has already been eloquently explained by several of the previous speakers. I really don't have anything more to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nowakowski. Tony Persia? I believe so.
Good evening, council. Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Tony Persia from Luzerne Borough. I'm definitely against taking rid of the drop boxes. But I want to explain something I've been hearing here, like everything is disenfranchised. I worked the polls. When I worked the polls, we took the people's name. If their name wasn't there, it might be because they got married, moved. But we really looked for the information. And when we got it, we told them where to vote. And if we didn't find that information, they came back, we couldn't find out. We did a provisional ballot. And both Republican and Democrat people agreed to the provisional ballot. We put it to the side in case it was an important thing, we could look later on to verify that vote. So the people that work at these polling areas are good people. They're going to make sure that this is a fair election. But there's a lot of people that have to work. That's why the drop boxes are important. They're out of the area, and they don't trust the mail. The mail isn't as good as it used to be. So now, how many people do we have in the polling areas for one machine? How many people are there for one machine?
Well, it varies based on the polling location.
No, one machine, how many people do you have?
Three.
Okay. Now, if there's one person that doesn't make it to, got sick, or something happened, they couldn't make it, maybe died, what happens to that poll? What happens to that polling area?
Mr. Persia, this is an opportunity for public comment, not for a back-and-forth discussion with members of council.
Okay, I just wondered what.
So if you just want to finish your comment, you have time. I'm just letting you know.
Okay, my comment is what happens if a polling area has to close down because of illness or something? Is there a backup plan? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have contingency plans.
All right. Next up, David, I apologize if I say his name incorrectly, Umke, from Plains Township.
Umke.
Umke.
Hi, hello. David Umke, Plains Township. I'd like to bring up the point or address the United States postal system and the unreliability of our mail. Without the drop boxes, most people are probably going to be using the mail. And I've heard it advocated in the comments here. I just brought, I just anecdotally want to show a card that I received for my birthday yesterday. My birthday was the first week in September, and this is postmarked the 30th of August. If this had been, instead of a greeting card to me, a vote, it wouldn't have been counted. I'm sure it would not have been legal to arrive close to three weeks late. I think that's probably across, you know, parties. Everybody could agree that our postal system is very degraded compared to four or five years ago. This is not just one, I mean, this is one example. I've had incidents trying to pay bills this year. Major incidents that caused inconveniences about three or four times. Second, I just question the legality of the county manager making the decision unilaterally to change this. Isn't that the, up to the Board of Elections? This is something that I would like to know. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Griffith.
Sorry, they had to wake me up. I was not out there for this comment stuff. The first issue that I have is obviously on this drop box issue. The county manager made a decision based on the safety of the voters and the residents of this county, not on the fact whether she likes drop boxes or not. The whole decision process was based on that factor. So we had a president get shot, an ex-president get shot. We had an assassination attempt on that same person. We have issues where people are polarized with election process right now, with Democrats against Republicans and independents. Everybody's fighting among themselves. We have a very toxic election process going on right now. For us to have a drop box and put the county at that liability is stupid. For lack of a better term, and to polish up the English language any better than that would be not worthwhile. We have to be sure that what we're doing here is safe for the people. We have an election process, elections are 41 days from now. We had an issue with the Board of Elections on Wednesday. People were here screaming and carrying on about election ballots not being on time. I went to the manager immediately and asked her, and she said immediately, without any hesitation, Mr. Griffith is the controller, you go in there and take a look. That's not hiding anything. That's being transparent. That's looking out for the voters of this county. That's what we do here. We spent a half an hour talking about drop boxes. We're 41 days to the election. We can't get enough people in the office to help us get this work done. We had 30 people here talk. Not one person volunteers to try and help. But we all want to talk about drop boxes. Drop boxes is not the end of the world here, folks. To be able to vote by drop boxes is convenient. Putting it in the mail is the right way to do it, that's what the law allows. Coming into the Bureau of Elections is allowed. Drop boxes are not. the law allows. Coming into the Bureau of Elections is allowed. Drop boxes are not allowed. Why we want to push this issue is beyond my comprehension. I don't understand why we're filibustering over this drop box issue here tonight. We have people in droves coming out over drop boxes. The election was certified on Monday. The Board of Elections isn't going to get together until next week, next week, to approve the ballots. And everybody's crying about drop boxes? Let's get the Board of Elections to get off their duff and do their job and meet tomorrow to approve the ballots so we can get them proofed and get them printed and get them out. Let's do that and stop with the nonsense about drop boxes. This isn't productive. This is counterproductive. We need to work together to get the election done as best we can and stop fighting among ourselves, because that's how we're going to get things done here. But the Board of Elections is saying, we got to, when I, when drop boxes came out in 2020, I asked the Board if I could stand outside a drop box and watch the voters as they put ballots in. I was accosted. I was accused. I was going to be arrested. I was told that I can't do anything. I would be arrested by the Chair of the Board. Now she wants to do exactly the same thing she forbid me to do when they came out with them in 2020. This is ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Anybody else here in the audience for public comment? Mr. Granteed?
Joe Granteed, Plains Township. I'd just like to make a comment, continue on with the last speaker from Plains Township. He has no confidence that the postal system will handle the overburden of mail-in ballots. And I'm in the same place. I think we should do away with postal system having to handle them, and everybody go back to the same-day voting, which is the way we did it for decades and decades. Bringing back mail-in, or drop boxes is not the answer. I'd also like to speak about the security of ballots and elections. Seems like the Democratic Party is always on the no-security end of the decision. They vote against any kind of voter ID. They come out for drop boxes, which are insecure. We know that because we had four ballots come in, unsigned, witnessed by the same person, and put into a drop box, which is illegal. Still waiting to have somebody do an investigation on that. Beth Gilbert coming in here as the head of this group that came out tonight is an embarrassment. She was an embarrassment when she was the head of the Election Bureau. She did not speak up about the missing ballot. She sat in a corner, silent. She waves the ACLU in our faces, which is a bigger embarrassment, because the only people that the ACLU protects are the illegal immigrants coming across the border. They have no credibility, and they should hang their heads in shame. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Granteed. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Scavo, let me just see if anybody else is from Luzerne County that's in the audience here, and then you can speak. Go ahead, sir.
Mike Potsco, Hanover Township. Yeah, I'd like to echo that ACLU comment, because if they're going to put a letter in for this, I want to see the letter they put in for the paper gate. I mean, if that wasn't the epitome of voter disenfranchisement, I don't know what was. So, if they can, if they can show that, I think, then, then they should be allowed to submit to the, to this committee. I applaud what everybody's doing here and Manager Crocamo for doing what she did, and I think it's right. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
TJ Fitzgerald, Newport Township. Number one intimidation. First of all, the left always says that the right is always intimidating. We're not the ones that try to shoot a president twice. We're not the ones that rioted in the streets. We're not the one walking up to people in MAGA hats and pushing the MAGA hats out. We are not these people. Yeah, maybe we're a little loud. Maybe we put our point, but thank God we have the First Amendment. And thank God seven of these board members did not vote for that other ridiculous thing, because all they're going to do is try to silence us and intimidate. So, the only intimidation that is coming, it's from the left against the right. They turn over statues. They've been taking signs out. There's documentations of this. But we're the ones that are being abused and intimidated. So, let's get that straight. The second thing is disability. I have a disability. I don't usually show this card, but every step I take hurts. Every step. Okay? I can get to the Bureau between now and Election Day. Thank God, it's just not on Election Day, because as you all know, I lost one of my toes two years ago. I voted on the Friday. I got out on a Monday, and I made sure my vote. I went in front of Congress, and they asked if it was counted. Yes, it was. The Election Bureau did their job. Very proud of them. So, so as far as a disability, that's bullshit. That's all it is.
Mr. Fitzgerald, please.
Okay. So, that is just wrong. It's a lie. The reason why they want drop boxes is because it's in the dark. Everything ugly happens in the dark. So, it's, when you stop doing stuff in the dark, you can get away with stuff. The reasons why they don't want to come to the Bureau, or they don't want to go to the, to vote in person, is you have to show an ID. That's it. Take away all the smoke, take all of us. It is all about getting away with something. That's it. We have plenty of time to do it. So, with all that excuses, I'll use that word, I apologize, but with all the excuses, that's all it is. It's smoke and mirrors, and just everything's optics to cheat. And I appreciate you, Ramilda. I know that there's a lot of security issues, but whatever the case is, I'm glad the drop boxes are gone. Good riddance.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody else outside in the audience? There's, okay. Mr. Barth? Okay. We'll look into that. Okay. We'll take a look.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board, of the Council. I didn't come here with a prepared speech for you.
What's your municipality?
My name is Ira Barth. I'm from Dallas.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't come here with a prepared speech, but I did want to have a chance to just kind of elucidate upon what I feel is kind of an injustice for many of our constituents. Without ballot boxes, many of us don't feel like we have a chance for our voices to be heard. Now, though I'm wearing blue, I don't prescribe to vote all blue or all red. I'm here to vote for who I feel is the correct people to represent us. And I feel as though many of us don't get a chance when we have a ballot that doesn't go to a ballot box for our voice necessarily to be heard. There's a chance, as many people have mentioned, for our ballots to be lost in the mail. There's a chance that we might not get to our polling place in time. There's a chance that our mail may be lost or stolen. And I, I would like to pretend that those things don't happen, but I also want to say that I, there's a chance for us to allow that to not even be considered by having those ballot boxes in place. And if we can do anything to make people feel that their votes will be counted and will be secure, then we should do that. And I feel very strongly that if my vote, for some reason, goes missing, and I'm checking on, you know, the website to see that it's not there, that I'm going to feel like my vote doesn't count anymore, and my voice doesn't count anymore. I know other people are going to feel the same way. So, on behalf of them and all the people who have already bought into this system where we're putting our ballots and our voices on the line with this system, we want to have a chance to be heard, and we want to support the people that we feel are able, that we should support. That's all I have for you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Scavo?
Good evening. Frank Scavo, Old Forge, Pennsylvania, Lackawanna County, your sister county. And I have to tell you what an education this has been, and it's a hat tip to Ms. Ramilda Crocamo. You know, I'm not sure everybody understands the liability of a drop box and the litigation that comes with it if someone decides to file a claim rightly or wrongly. So, Lackawanna County is going to have their election board meeting tomorrow, and I will be there and present the same logic to Lackawanna County and try to save the taxpayers from things that, that can go wrong. So, remember this. If the other side says there are no conspiracies, then we ourselves must say there are no coincidences like running out of paper during an election, which paper is one of the cheapest things that you can buy for the election. So, what I would say to this body, and I will say it to our Lackawanna County Commissioners, which I favor this type of government rather than the three Commissioner, but I think we should fund elections. Let's try not to save money on elections. Let's pay the election workers. Let's have a contingent like, like Ramilda says, if there's someone that can't make it, let's have a group of people that we are vetted, and we could bring those into the elections, because what's more important than this? Not much. And let me tell you this. I didn't know that drop boxes were not part of Act 77, which was passed in 2019. A lot of us don't. The drop boxes were an emergency provision for COVID. That was put in place by judges, which now the COVID emergency mandate is over. So should the drop boxes be, unless the legislature who put Act 77, which changed our whole voting system, by mail. So, that's what we're dependent on. And by, by the, by the way, you have to pass 35 mailboxes in Wilkes-Barre before you get here. You have to pass 10 mailboxes in Kingston before you get here. So, convenience is the mailbox and the way the Pennsylvania State Legislature enacted it. But I will tell you this. If the ACLU was on this, is on this, and it was against state law or an election statute, you wouldn't get a coercive letter today. You would have got a notice of a lawsuit. So, this county is in the right. I applaud this county, this Board, and Ramilda Crocamo for helping Lackawanna County now see the light tomorrow. So, thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Scavo. Mr. Walsh? I apologize. I didn't know you wanted to go.
So, I was in the, in the back row for, sorry. Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. First and foremost, I commend Manager Crocamo for this decision to remove the drop boxes. Tonight, I've heard a lot of personal stories based on opinions and feelings and zero evidence or data or statistics, only what-ifs. All I have heard is perfect symphony by the Marxists, an example of, an example of standpoint epistemology. Standpoint epistemology is a Marxist core value, and they tell personal or third-party stories, and their stories are all unverifiable. And if you don't believe their fabrications without data, statistics, or evidence, only their what-ifs, you're the enemy. Don't fall for this, please. Standpoint epistemology is just one of the 13 tenants of the core values of Marxism. Voting is a duty and should require some effort to make sure your vote is cast. The definition of duty is a task or action that someone is required to perform. Any additional resources that our county should spend on this election should be to clean our voter rolls, make sure all new registrations and mail-in ballots are processed, and to make sure there is not one illegal vote cast in this county, and if there is, that person or group of people should be prosecuted to the fullest. The facts are as follows. The drop boxes were never legitimate under state, under state law, Act 77 of 2019, which established the use of mail-in ballots. The only reason drop boxes were allowed was due to COVID outbreak prior to the elections of 2020, since there was an emergency declaration put out by Governor Wolf. Then-Secretary Kathy Bookbar was the person that came up with the idea to use drop boxes instead of the U.S. Postal Service. The Pennsylvania Democratic Party and the Pennsylvania Senate Democrats during that time argued that the drop boxes were necessary due to the outbreak of COVID and therefore legitimized under the emergency declaration put out by Tom Wolfe. Kathy Bookbar argued that the drop boxes were the only way that voters should return ballots, and argued that the U.S. Post Office was unable to process and deliver ballots to the election offices prior to the election day due to COVID safety measures. The ruling by the State Supreme Court justices determined that the ballot drop boxes were necessary due to the emergency declaration put out by Tom Wolfe, and that the health and safety of the voter was at risk. They were all lies. The Supreme Court justices left a decision as far as the number of drop boxes on the, decision to the counties. That part of the ruling violates the state and federal constitution under Article 7, Section 6, under the uniformity clause.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Is that it?
Yeah, your time was up.
I didn't hear a buzzer.
Yeah, it was up like 10 seconds ago. I gave you a full 10 seconds. That's okay.
But anyways, that's all. Denise Williams wants two drop boxes, one in Wilkes-Barre, one in Hazelton, the two easiest towns to get around with public transportation. What about the rural communities? They're the ones being disenfranchised. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Anybody? Ms. Edwards?
Sorry.
Bless you.
Thank you. Desiree Edwards, Swearsville. I'm a little taken back about Walter Griffith when he came up here to speak, as he looked at us, the residents, and kind of reprimanded us as saying that we didn't offer to volunteer to help with the registrations or the ballots at the Bureau. Well, if he was at the last election board meeting, he would know that numerous of us offered to go and help them with the registrations and stuff, and we were denied. We were told we weren't allowed to, and they were getting help from other election workers and Bureau workers from other counties. So, I just wanted to get that on the record, so we don't look like we don't want to be involved. Thank you. Oh, wait. Ramilda, I want to thank you so much. You're a very brave person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Is there anybody else outside? One? Okay. We still have some people on the Zoom as well.
Mike Stash, Lehman Township. Just want to thank Ms. Crocamo for doing the right thing. It was a hard decision, and we appreciate your, your decision. Just want to go over some things about the drop boxes. As we know, there are several townships in our county that have banned drop boxes. So, if they were really universally accepted as a good method for elections, I think, I don't think the county, the townships would, would ban them. And I just want to go over some of the countries in the world that actually banned drop boxes. This is as of April this year. First off is France. They banned them in 1975 due to fraud. Mexico banned them in 1992 due to fraud. Belgium banned them in 2018 due to fraud. Sweden does not permit mail, drop boxes or mail-in voting. Italy, Ukraine, Russia, Japan, no Middle Eastern country permits, permits them. Italy, Ukraine, Russia, Japan, no Middle Eastern country permits them and no Latin country permits them. So we're not alone in this and I think it was the right decision. So thank you and free, fair, and transparent elections. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. There's nobody else in the audience? Oh, go ahead.
Amy Carosa, 44th. I just wanted to say something really quick. A reminder that the people that are pushing for drop boxes are also pushing in Washington to vote against voter ID, proof of citizenship. They're voting to allow illegal aliens to vote and they're voting to allow non-citizens to become law enforcement authorities.
Thank you, Ms. Carosa. All right. Anybody else in the audience? All right, we'll move on to the Zoom. Ms. Jordan? Ms. Jordan? Did she? She was, she did have her hand up. Okay. All right. She took her hand down. Okay. All right. We'll move on for now. Ms. Glennon, Claudia Glennon?
Yes, Claudia Glennon, Salem Township. My first question to County Council is, what provision gives the county manager the authority to override the decisions of the county election board? And if you provide an answer, please provide citations and precedents in your answer. I appreciate that Ms. Crocamo is evaluating the possible scenarios and considering preemptive initiatives. My concerns, however, is a potential harm from overreacting. How are the absentee and mail ballot recipients going to be timely informed of the significant new barrier to submitting their ballot? If this unilateral decision by Ms. Crocamo is proven to be a legal action, the county should send letters to every mail ballot recipient addressing the available alternatives. It is crucial that no legal voter is left disenfranchised in this most critical election. Unlike the failure to inform all registered voters that there was a special election this past spring at the same time as the primaries, when independents, undeclared, and other party voters were left uninformed. I believe that drop boxes should remain in place. They have been successfully used in the past eight elections in the county and were approved for this coming election this November by our election board. The USPS, which has unfortunately been severely undermined by the Postmaster General DeJoy, is not a reliable option. Returning the ballots to the election bureau with limited weekday hours presents significant logistical obstacles and is not a viable proposal. Voter protection and ballot integrity have been and continue to be addressed by the federal and state officials and funding from sources such as the Election Integrity Act is available for this specific purpose. This is not unique to Luzerne County. Voter intimidation for the express purpose of suppressing the vote is happening countrywide. I'm a Navy veteran. I served to preserve our freedoms. Most importantly, free and fair elections. If we give in to bullies or cower to terrorist threats, we have forfeited that for which we have fought and many have died. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try Ms. Jordan again. There you go.
Okay, hello, everybody. I hope you guys can hear me now.
We can hear you, Ms. Jordan.
Okay, I wanted to just say my name is Deborah Jordan. I'm Sugarloaf Township. I thank the previous woman who just spoke for her service. I do believe that all veterans are important. I do believe that my views differ from hers because I believe she may have a little misguidance and may want to, even though I very respect what she did, I do not agree. But that's another topic. So I would like to begin with, on March 18th of 2024, the Pennsylvania Senate Committee on Government held a legislative hearing on suggested principles for state statutes regarding election security. Attendees at this hearing were the joint chairs of both the Democratic and Republican Parties, a panel of 20 election cybersecurity experts, including Dr. Alec Yasidniak, a computer scientist and expert in election security at U of South Alabama. Also speaking, Kevin Schockland, Chief Technologist and Designated Speaker on Election Security for the US Department of State. So you could see from this list of panelists at this hearing that this is no small matter. Ballot security affects all of us. Thus, Dropbox issues are not defined under the legal term of civil rights. These rights, these are rights that protect people from discrimination based on characteristics such as race, gender, religion, et cetera. Dropbox rules and regulations are actually uniform for all people. They do not discriminate by a person's color or sexual identity or preference. So the legal entity of drop boxes falls under basic liberties and freedoms. Now, the problem with the ACLU sending a letter to the county manager is evident by admission from their own website. And I quote, "Since our nation's founding, discriminatory policies and laws have created an unequal system in which black communities have had their civil rights and liberties denied." Okay, drop boxes are not a color issue. And furthermore, it goes on to state that their systemic equality agenda, they will use nationwide litigation to advance laws and policies. So I don't like the fact that they're almost threatening just by bringing up the word ACLU and civil liberties. It's not fair. It's obvious to everyone that drop boxes and their use or non-use is not based on a subversion of a certain class or group. It affects all of us and unless the ACLU is presenting people who do not want drop boxes, then their point is mute. Okay, let's get back to the testimony I was speaking of.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Your time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Brianna Ribka.
Hello, my name is Brianna Ribka. My municipality is Fairmount Township. Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm Brianna Ribka, the Voter Services Coordinator for the State League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania and a Luzerne County voter. Many citizens in our community and throughout the Commonwealth believe that preserving ballot drop boxes is vital to protecting our democratic rights. Ballot drop boxes provide a vital service by ensuring that every voter has accessible, secure, and convenient options for casting their votes. They have been working well in Luzerne County and are favored by voters. The support is critical, especially since our Democratic elected commissioners approve their use. It's important for the board and county manager to listen to the constituents they serve and recognize the value these drop boxes provide. Concerns regarding security threats are vague and unnamed. It's essential to clarify that these drop boxes are placed in secure locations, monitored, and designed to protect the integrity of every ballot. The assertion that they pose a danger is unfounded. In fact, continuously spreading the narrative that drop boxes aren't safe only fuels fear mongering, which undermines the public confidence in our electoral process. Moreover, I want to emphasize that ballot drop boxes do not serve the same purpose as mailboxes. They are specifically designed to facilitate the voting process and increase accessibility, particularly for those who may face challenges with traditional voting methods due to work commitments, health circumstances, or transportation barriers. I've spoken with many Luzerne County citizens who utilize drop boxes because accessing their mailboxes poses significant risks. For instance, we have numerous rural voters whose mailboxes are far away and often located on unstable terrain. Driving to a drop box location allows them to safely walk on a well-maintained sidewalk to deliver their ballots. One rural voter shared with me that retrieving her mail daily felt like putting her life at risk as she had to cross a dangerously busy highway with high-speed traffic. This is not just an inconvenience, it's a matter of safety. I want to stress that the experiences I've shared tonight are verifiable accounts from our community. Their insights highlight the necessity of drop boxes and underscore the collective will of the people. It's also important to address the misconceptions around Act 77. While drop boxes are not explicitly mentioned, they are not prohibited either. This silence allows counties to make choices that benefit their citizens. In Luzerne County, retaining drop boxes reflects our commitment to a fair and participatory democracy. The recent proposal to remove drop boxes raises serious concerns, especially with election fast approaching. Implementing such sudden changes can lead to confusion among voters, potentially disenfranchising those who depend on these resources. We urge the county manager to consider the implications of removing these essential tools. Upholding and expanding access to ballot drop boxes not only aligns with the will of the people, but also demonstrates a commitment to democratic accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up we have Mr. Herring.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Herring.
Good evening, Chairman Lombardo and the rest of the Luzerne County Council. First off, as a Marine Corps combat veteran, I just want to say that no speaker that called in tonight speaks on behalf of veterans. We each have our own independent thoughts. I'm also not there tonight because I got done today working one of my three jobs. Now, three jobs, so be it, but I still make it a point to go and vote every single election. So what I've heard obviously are a whole lot of excuses. I want to touch on a few things, though. First and foremost, you know, I'm a little sad that I missed the eight-person PR parade that happened outside before this meeting. I'm sure I'll see it on the news later because the news, for some reason, likes to cater down to a very small number of people that just have loud voices. So, you know, it's the Luzerne County Council, Board of Elections, pretty much all of our county government. It always seems to be left-leaning coverage from the news and it's really sad to see that, to be honest with you. What I did have on my bingo card tonight, though, was unstable terrain, so I'm afraid I'm going to lose that one. But what I've heard tonight is predictable and is waking up tomorrow. Disenfranchisement, voter suppression, fear mongering. We've heard in previous county or Board of Election meetings, myself and others have been called losers, lunatics. You guys have all heard the bigot, racist, every ism there is out there. Here's the bottom line for me and for the majority of who you heard tonight. We come prepared with facts and not emotions. The words, the name-collings, all that that is continuously happening in Luzerne County is what folks do when they cannot defeat you on facts. There's 200,000 people in Luzerne County. We had somebody come in tonight and say they mustered up 300 signatures. That is by far short of the will of the people. Every organization that has sent letters to Manager Crocamo is a far-left Marxist organization. And I usually don't, but tonight, we got to get the truth out there, okay? These are not people that are bipartisan, that look at all the facts of the case and make an objective decision. These are groups that push, push, push left-leaning Marxist ideology. If the ACLJ Judicial Watch, who was already sued Luzerne County, by the way, or the Heritage Foundation can come in, they could sue just the same way. So Manager Crocamo was in a tough spot. I understand her position. But the one thing that is indisputable tonight, which is a fact, was that when you did a review, not you, but when the Board of Elections did a review of voters that showed up versus ballots that were brought back to the election bureau from drop boxes, there was a disparity in that number. That is a fact. That's not a bingo card or a buzzer. Until that gets reconciled, you cannot-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herring. Your time is up. Sorry. Okay. All right. Next up we have Ariel Overdorff.
Hello, yes, this is Ariel Overdorff from the city of Wilkes-Barre. I also didn't, you know, prepare something to say, but I did want to voice my support for the drop boxes. I guess some things I want everyone to consider are that you can, you know, speak from your own point of view, of course, your experience is getting to the ballots, et cetera, but I think anyone, no matter what party you're affiliated, can agree we do want fair, secure elections. We want everyone to be able to vote and we want those votes to count. So when it comes to the drop boxes, whether or not we should have them, I think, is a separate discussion from, you know, verifying their security. I think it's totally fair to continue the conversation as to how we can make sure the drop boxes are secure. Some instances have been mentioned of folks dropping off multiple ballots in one go. And it was mentioned that, assuming you have the proper documentation, that is legal. You can drop a ballot off for someone else if you have filled out, you know, the form that states you're going to do that. To my understanding, all ballots would be reviewed, much like provisional ballots, as was mentioned earlier, before being counted. So if someone, you know, fabricated for ballots, you know, all with their own name or something or with the name of someone who doesn't actually live here, some other way that they were attempting to commit fraud, that would be caught before those ballots were counted. So I think that's definitely one major piece. I hope everyone here would agree. We don't want to disenfranchise voters. We don't want to make it harder to vote and we don't want to make it less reliable that that vote gets there in terms of, you know, was it lost in the mail? Was it damaged? Who is able to interact with this ballot before it, you know, arrives at a secure location? So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next up we have Mr. Schaefer. Mark Schaefer. There you go.
Sorry about that. Mark Schaefer, Wilkes-Barre. You can hear me all right, right?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Schaefer.
Okay. Yeah, so Mr. Herring said predictability, but again, the anti-drop box people were as predictable. At the last Board of Elections meeting, I pointed out that these people aren't going to stop at drop boxes, that they're congratulating Ms. Crocamo now, but next week they'll be coming for all mail-in votes. And as you saw, all the people who are opposed to drop boxes came and said, you should have to vote in person, that you should have to show ID, spouted conspiracy theories about illegal aliens voting or people voting multiple times. The people, Ms. Crocamo, you need to remember that you're not stopping them by getting rid of drop boxes. You may think you're making a compromise and once I do this, it'll all go away. It's not going to go away. They're just going to keep coming. They're going to attack voting every way they can because they only want certain people to vote. It's that simple. They listen to conspiracy theories. They think that, we had people came here tonight shouting about 10,000 mules, which is a conspiracy theory movie based on nothing. These people aren't operating based on facts. They're operating based on their conspiracy theories and you can't compromise with them by getting rid of drop boxes. You can talk about the security of drop boxes, but a mailbox is completely unsecured. The people who are anti-drop box for security reasons are now shouting that we should vote by mail when vote by mail is completely insecure. The mental gymnastics of the people opposed to drop boxes is baffling. One second they're saying everyone should vote in person, the next they're saying, well, if you don't want to vote in person, you can vote by mail. Then when you point out mail isn't secure, they say, uh, uh, uh. It's just, Ms. Crocamo, you're compromising with someone who cannot be compromised with. You need to stand firm, not overrule your Board of Elections in a way that's probably legal and support people's right to vote in this county by instituting drop boxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Next up we'll have Joseph Schaefer.
Hi, my name is Joseph Schaefer from Dorans Township. First, I'd like to correct something that a previous speaker said when referring to the attempted assassinations of President, former President Trump. The first shooter was a registered Republican. The second was a Trump voter. So it was not Democrats or the left. And he mentioned that the right doesn't riot. I remember January 6th, when the right tried to overthrow a free and fair election and tried to overthrow the Constitution and tried to hang the Vice President of the United States. I kind of think that's violence. Now, as far as the drop boxes, I support- Now, as far as the drop boxes, I support drop boxes. I can only speak to Penn Place because that's where I dropped mine off. They're safe and secure. You walk in, there's a security guard about six feet from the drop box. The Wilkes-Barre City Police Station is a 20-second walk away from Penn Place. So it is, it is a secure area. Echoing what Mark Schaefer said earlier, now they're talking about all these mailboxes. Talk about a lack of security and a lack of oversight. The mailboxes are totally open, that there is no oversight there. And I think it was about a year ago, there was a rash of mail being stolen, including the mailbox just outside the postal, the post office. Slow delivery has been mentioned. You know, somebody could mail their ballot two weeks in advance and it doesn't get there in time. Mailboxes, drop boxes, you go in, you put your mail in, you go, and then a couple days later, you get an email from the county saying, we received your ballot. And one other thing, I don't know why one person, the county manager, gets to speak for 203,321 registered voters in Luzerne County. The election board approved the drop boxes, but one person speaks for, let's say, 203,321 people, and I don't know how that, that could be. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Mr. Kaminsky, Jay Kaminsky.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you, Mr. Kaminsky. Go ahead.
Okay, Jay Kaminsky, Fairmont Township. Yeah, this is a cry and shame. I feel like we're literally in the late 1800s here having an argument about poll taxes. Which side are you on is right? This is unbelievable, even be having this conversation in 2024 in a so-called democracy. Polling ballot box is 42 days before arguably the most election, most important election since the Civil War, but why? Some have an issue with the security or timeliness of mail-in ballots. I don't blame you. I don't trust the mail to deliver them in time either, but there is a simple solution: drop boxes. Secure way to allow citizens to deliver their vote, they do not have the time to sit and wait in line. And I'm from literally Vero's most rural part of the county, so don't say that it's only people in the city. This is why I need ballot boxes. I own a farm, work a full-time job, and own a separate small business, and I do not have one extra minute in my day to sit and wait in line when I have bills to pay, mouths to feed. But some still have a problem with drop boxes. Why? Two words: political motivation. You say drop boxes are dangerous? Well, I think it is far more dangerous to vote in person when you have lunatics carrying guns into polling places. Can you remember back a few generations when your Polish, Irish, and Italian grandparents were the immigrants that these same voting disenfranchisement tactics were being used against? I hear the words Marxist and Communist being thrown out like hotcakes tonight. I really wonder if any of these folks have the slightest idea what Marxism or Communism is. Because if you think democracy and voting rights equates to Marxism and Communism, then you might want to read a book and not an online four chan forum. I want you to ask yourself, are you really truly concerned with election interference? Because to me, it appears that the only election interference you are concerned with is the election interference you are causing by not allowing drop boxes in our beautiful county. Let's take a look at the statistics. The Brennan Center for Justice found that only one out of 1 million votes using drop boxes resulted in voter fraud. There will be far, far, far more than 1 in 1 million votes being affected by the removal of drop boxes. In fact, the only election fraud I can remember in this area is when a man from 44 casted a ballot for his dead mother for Donald Trump in the last presidential election. Any outrage there? No, I don't think so. Because this isn't about election integrity, and it never has been. This is about voter disenfranchisement for electoral and political gain, plain and simple. I ask you to please find the decency and integrity within yourself to save democracy in this beautiful county and continue to allow drop boxes to stay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Next up, we have, the name says Donna's iPad. Donna, can you state your full name and your municipality, please?
Yes, my name is Donna Kaminsky, and I'm from Harvey's Lake. I'm for the drop boxes, especially for the elderly who have a hard time getting to them. And me personally will never vote in person again, knowing that they have a right to carry in these voting places. That's, that's more liability and the scariest thing I've ever heard. I will never be in person again. And my biggest concern here is watching this online, is all of you on your cellphones, sitting there scrolling through them, not paying attention. You were elected to help us, not to sit there on your phones. Can't you shut your phones off until these meetings are over? I can't even believe, I'm watching, I can see half of you, it's just on them scrolling down and looking whatever, whatever you's around. Shut them off, do what you were voted in to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. We have Mark. I assume Mr. Raybo.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking. I mean, I, I have to say, I haven't been surprised, I don't know, like, for most part, but I find two pretty much peculiar, and pretty much, Mr. Chair, I'm going to use your word baffling here, because of the fact that you have two trains of thought by the, by the Left that are saying, well, in one instance, there's voter suppression, but then at the same time, as of, as of the newspaper articles yesterday, today and yesterday citing that they want the additional manpower for the drop boxes, when they themselves, two years ago during the governor's election, during, when Governor Shapiro was campaigning, and then he won for governor, they cited voter intimidation when the security cameras were being, were being considered at the time, Mr. Chair. I don't know if you remember that. So, one, one train of thought is by the, by the socialist Left, they're saying voter intimidation, and now they're saying voter suppression. It's kind of like being perpetrator and the victim at the same time. It, it, it's staggering, to say the least. Oh, and one other thing, Mr. Chairman, and I don't bring up personal history here for, for myself, but I, I hear some of, a few of the hecklers citing that if someone knows what Communism or Marxism is. My mother fled from communist Czechoslovakia with my grandmother and her three other sisters, and the, the communists took their farm, their family farm, as well as the rest of the other soldiers' farms, because of the useful idiots like the hecklers who said the Soviets are our saviors, they're coming to rescue us because we're such in dire need after what the Nazi Germany, Germans did to us after World War II. And then, you know what they did in 1948, Mr. Chairman? To come into Czechoslovakia and the, and the residents? They persecuted and oppressed them for nearly 80 years. So for the ignoramuses on the socialist Left who don't know your history and don't know what Marxism is, I suggest you read a book. And furthermore, as far as the ballot drop boxes in rural areas, Mr. Chairman, why is the chairman of the election board saying that only Hazelton and Wilkes-Barre should get ballot drop boxes? They're in, they're in the city, they're in the urban areas. They're far away from the rural areas. So I would ask the League of Women Voters representative, why are you supporting the Chair of the Election Board in putting the two ballot drop boxes in those cities when the rural residents would have to drive, especially in the areas? Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Manager Crocamo, for your courage.
All right, thank you. Vivian Kreidler-Lacina?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, it's Vivian Kreidler-Lacina from Nannic, yeah, Nescapack, Pennsylvania. First off, I want to say thank you, Mrs. Crocamo. And then I want to say, I don't understand if people think that these drop boxes have 24-hour surveillance, surveillance, that if somebody is sitting there watching. It's been made very clear from the Homeland Security that there have been threats made. The county manager has taken action to protect the people of Luzerne County, to keep them safe. So why is it so hard for everybody to understand? If you go to that drop box and say somebody right before you walked in and stuck something in that box, and you opened it and it exploded, who's going to be there to help you? Nobody's coming out of that camera because they're not manned, nobody's seeing it until somebody comes along and realizes, oh, oh, there's been an incident, we need to call police. I mean, like, come on, people, she didn't take them away forever, she took them away for this election to keep everybody safe. If you think your ballot is more important than your safety, then you better reconsider, you know, your, your priorities here. Because I'm sorry, my life is more, more important than that ballot, and if I want, I'll walk down, I'll go down to my mailbox down in town, and I'll mail it from there because we're a rural area, we have our mailboxes and otherwise Penn Plaza during the day, and Penn Plaza's security guards leave at, what, 5 o'clock, I believe it is? So who's going to be there all night long manning these boxes? Because that camera brother doesn't go over to the police station and say, hey, monitor this people, if something happens, go over. It's the same way, same way as Hazelton. You're talking 24 hours surveillance, somebody being there 24 hours a day to make sure you only put one ballot in that box, and what happens when you don't? Do they have the authority to arrest you right there on the spot? No, because most, they're only going to probably be county sheriffs, and they're going to be told to go to just mark the diamond, time and day down, and then after the election, we'll look at it. We still have cases sitting on the district attorney's desk from past people of this, and they're not prosecuted. We just had an incident the other day where it is all over the internet of somebody walking, going through security, going up to the election board, and depositing more than one ballot without any information showing she had that permission to do so. Luckily enough, somebody saw it, they took those four ballots and put them away. So, you know, that's all I have to say, is thank you, Mrs. Crocamo, for, for doing the best job. You have broad shoulders, and I know you will, you'll do the right thing and leave this in place, and everybody will calm down eventually. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Jan Robinson.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jan Robinson, I live in Pittston Township, and I was, I've learned a lot tonight. In 2020, I was a socialist, and now I'm a Marxist. I am not a heckler, I am a fellow citizen, and I have the same right, First Amendment rights that you do, and I expect you to give other people with differing opinions the same respect as they have given you. There's been a lot of misinformation here tonight, and I have a conspiracy theory of my own. I have been wondering for the last several years why Trump is telling his people not to use mail-in ballots. I'm thinking, why would he make it harder for his people to vote? And I think we just found out. This decision came like less than a week after we had a huge rally in Wilkes-Barre for Kamala Harris. And all of a sudden, we're in, six weeks before, and a major election, we're making major decisions that will interfere with the way people have in the past dealt with their mail-in ballots. In 2016, my sister-in-law, who has MS, mailed her mail-in ballot 10 days before the election, and it did not get there in time. The mails are not dependable. The drop boxes are. And all the things that people have been talking about, such as stuffing the ballot boxes, there, there are things that are set up to keep more than one person voting. They may be able to drop in 10 ballots, but it's going to be caught when they're going through the, the ballots in the Election Bureau. So I would like to call for the drop boxes to be maintained because I trust them. Anything that could, can happen to a drop box can also happen in a polling place. So if somebody threatens the polling places, are we going to shut them down too? This is, I mean, this is, this whole thing is just ridiculous. First of all, it's too late to make this decision, in my opinion. And all these other questions that people have about things that have gone wrong, that should have been taken care of in the last four years. It's too late to do everything now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. James Lacina?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Okay, I want to thank you all, this is James Lacina from Nescapack. I'm an over-the-road truck driver, so for everyone talking about how hard it is to get in and cast your ballot, I want to debunk that right now because while I drive across country, I could still make it back here on the election day to cast my ballot. So complaining about these drop boxes being pulled out is kind of irrelevant in that case. Also, I have constantly and repeatedly heard our republic referred to as a democracy. That has gone out the window. We are a constitutional republic with a democratic vote, so people need to remember that one. As for being called a socialist and a communist and a Marxist, for the last, I don't know, four years plus eight years of Obama, I've been called a deplorable, a Bible thumper, a bigot, and everything else under the sun. So quite honestly, if the insults hurt, don't throw them out there. Now, somebody else brought up January 6th. Not one person for January 6th was charged with anything other than trespass because it wasn't Trump's, Republicans who were doing the violence, it was Agent Provocators of Antifa and BLM. So we're going to throw all these out here, I'm going to debunk every one of them. As for the boxes, yeah, go ahead and pull them. There's absolutely no problem with using the mail or going to a poll place. If I can make it back from California to Pennsylvania in time to vote in an 18-wheeler, you can hop your little butt into a car and go down to a polling place and cast your ballot. It's not that hard. Thank you all, and have a good day.
All right, thank you. All right. Jerry Notaro?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, I thank you very much for calling me. I just want to tell you, I'm from, I'm from Klein Township, but I, I vote in the 116th District. Can I still speak?
Yeah, we're allowing people who aren't residents of the county to speak, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I've heard a lot of those speak for the drop boxes, but they, they talk like in circles. At first, they say they criticize the post office, that the post office is, is, is not reliable, but somehow, without any real facts, that somehow drop boxes, they feel safe with drop boxes. But it's all a feeling, there's no, there's no facts there. The facts are that they are, drop boxes have a security problem. They always have. All the evidence, all the examples of problems that they had with drop boxes have already been revealed, but, but, but they just seem to think that, that just doesn't matter anymore. The facts don't matter to them, it's all about emotions, what they think. But the problems are that, that drop boxes have a security problem. They also have a cost problem, it's an extra cost. There's logistics nightmares, there's all kinds of problems with the, with these drop boxes, and it's not worth it. It's not, as many, as mentioned before, it's not required by the law. So I, and there's another thing about, about, about the, 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 the Election Bureau, the election, I'm sorry, the election board has the authority to make this law. I have, I question that, that principle, that theory, that somehow the board is, they're not even elected, they're appointed, and somehow that they have the authority over elected officials, that, that, that grates, grates me, that rubs me the wrong way. I think that, that has to be, in my view, corrected. I don't appreciate that, that, that attitude. So there's no question here, that drop boxes are a problem, and I agree with some of the other comments there, that, that we have more important things to worry about in this election because there's other serious problems, and all this does is distract from the real issue of election, election integrity. So I do thank you so much for your time and effort, and thanks for allowing me to speak.
All right, thank you. We have two emails to read. The first is from Jay Notar Tomaso from Wyoming. The first is from Jay Notar Tomaso from Wyoming. Once again, I find myself called to defend voting rights in Loserun County. We need to make sure the ballot drop boxes are put in place as they have been successfully for years. Eliminating them is the result of pressure by the far-right voter suppression crowd that has been meddling in elections in Loserun County since the big lie in 2020. We must not let threats from the election-denying crowd frighten us into retreat. Using this logic, threats made to polling places would be enough to close them too. Also, it is not appropriate for the county manager to supersede the county board of elections charter and unilaterally make this decision. Hopefully, the UCLA and lawyers representing the public will look into this. State law, as well as the charter, do not give her this authority. I also request that any threats causing this fear-based decision to be made public and to all members of the Loserun County Council Board and that they are investigated to the fullest extent of the law. That is how you stand up for democracy, not backing down in fear. The solution to any potential problems is to resolve them, not surrender. People are counting on these boxes for various reasons and many other counties in PA continue to use them. I have been using them every year myself with no problem. Disenfranchising thousands of voters must not be tolerated. In fact, we have more, we should have more drop boxes. Also, the ballots are being prepared and have instructions with a link as to where the boxes are located. Does the county have any plans to reprint all ballots as well as let every voter know that this option is no longer available? Doing this so close to the election will bring more chaos and voter confusion. I was eliminate, I was speaking with two of my neighbors yesterday and neither of them were aware that the boxes were being eliminated. One, an elderly woman asked me, how can one person decide that? I told her I would ask tonight for both of us and all the voters of Loserun County. Loserun County needs strong, bold leadership focused on serving the public, not submitting to the far-right threats and fear tactics meant to suppress, meant to suppress voting rights. Jay Notar Tomaso from Wyoming, Pennsylvania. Next, we have from State Representative Alec Renkavich. Dear Manager Crocamo, I'm writing to express my support for your recent decision to eliminate four mail ballot drop boxes for the upcoming November 5th general election. These are indeed challenging times that demand difficult decisions and I commend you for the way you have navigated these pressures while offering peace of mind in Loserun County voters. Your dedication to fairness and security is evident and your decision reflects a commitment to upholding the integrity of our electoral process without personal bias. Tough, with tough decisions often comes resistance. I understand that there will be groups and individuals who may challenge your choices, casting doubt or attempting to lobby against the actions you've taken. As a state representative elected to serve 65,000 residents in Loserun County, I want to make it clear that you are not standing alone in this. There are many, myself included, and a significant number of my constituents who support the steps you've taken to safeguard the security and validity of our elections. Elections are the cornerstone of our democracy and it is essential that every voter takes pride in their participation, knowing the process is secure. With so much at stake in the upcoming election, we cannot afford to leave any room for doubt regarding the integrity of our voting system. Your decision not to deploy drop boxes due to challenges in staffing resources speaks to the careful consideration you've given to the overall welfare of our county and it is greatly appreciated. As you face opposition from the outside interest groups, please know that you have the support of those who recognize the importance of ensuring secure, transparent elections. I hope you find reassurance in knowing that many have fought similar battles to uphold these same values. Sincerely, Alec J. Renkavich, State Representative. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? It's 8:04, we'll restart at 8:10 with a work session. Thank you. All right, council members, it's 8:13 PM. Everybody's back, okay. I'd like to call the, I'd like to call the work session to order. We've already had the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. We'll call Ms. Lawrence when you're ready.
Mr. Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Krasinski.
Here.
Mr. Laskavage.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. Any additions or deletions to the work session agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is adopted. Okay. Receive and discuss budget reports for August 2024.
Hello, good evening. Just quickly, I want to go through the budget reports that you have in your packet. The first report is your revenue report. Revenue earned is at 84% of the budget, or 141,275,000. Tax collections are at 94%, 117,444. Our expenses are at 82,723, which is 51% of our budget, so favorable considering we're at the end of August. The next report in your package is a listing of budget transfers followed by the accounts payable report. Your accounts payable report is running at 51% through August, slightly below last year. Your treasurer's report shows a cash balance of $196 million at the end of August. Cash balance at the end of July was 208 million. The interest earned for the month of August is 432,642. Of that, ARPA accounts for 248,439. Our year-to-date interest that we've earned on all of our accounts so far is $3.7 million. Your ARPA cash balance is at 52,704,000. ARPA interest earned year-to-date is 2245,000 and ARPA interest earned in total is at $6.6 million. Just a few other things I want to mention. We're working on finalizing the 2025 county budget, which will be presented to council on 10/8. And also, we have an RFP that was published and that was for our financial advisory services. And in relation to that, we have PFM here today, who I believe is next on the agenda, so they'll be talking to you about the financial position. Any questions on your reports?
I just have one question, if you don't mind. I know you said that the ARPA cash balance is about 52 million, which I'm completely fine with as we continue to earn interest on it, but is there a reason why, are there still a lot of entities that haven't drawn down? Or is that, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Tell them they could take their time if they want.
Well, they can, yeah, unless they finish their, right. I mean, like, we would like to continue to earn the interest, obviously, but we also want to make sure that they finish the project on time.
Right, right.
So we're trying to balance that, especially when we're doing the 2025 budget, so.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Hawes?
Yeah, just one comment, that's pretty impressive. 94% tax collection rate, usually it's 91 and a half. So I think that's something to look forward to when we look at making sure this year's funds are covered. So, thank you so much, Ms. Rozell.
Absolutely, sure.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the PFM presentation.
All right, well, good evening, I do have a handout here, if you don't mind if I pass that out.
Do you, you have a digital copy of that, that we can, okay, all right, great. We'll just need to get, we'll just get it to Sharon after the meeting. Thank you.
Oh, it is? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah. We do. Okay, I thought it was different than the.
All right, well, again, good evening, Scott Shear with PFM Financial Advisors. So tonight, I'll be brief here, I know you have had a long evening so far. So usually, I like to come up about this time of the year as things kind of get very hot with the budget, just to go over a little bit regarding the county's debt service, just to kind of help you get acclimated with when you start hearing more information when it comes to the finances and the overall budget for 2025. So if we look at the first page of the agenda, just a couple of the items that I'll be touching on. Number one, just a quick general market update, obviously, probably most of you heard the news last week with what the Fed did, so we'll touch on that. A brief overview of the county's existing debt, and a little bit on the 2025 tax anticipation note, and then a little bit on the county's credit rating. And also happy to answer any questions that you may have along the way as well, or any follow-up information after I leave here this evening. So pages three and four hit on the short-term rate environment. So that's important when it comes to the investment earnings that you were just hearing about, when it comes time to borrow for a tax anticipation note. The short-term rates is kind of what dictates those two main issues and other investment balances that the county has. So that's been holding steady for a while. We see here on page three, you know, things trended upward in 2022 and '23, stayed flat, and now, just as of last week, we saw a 50-basis-point decrease by the Fed and expected to have a few more decreases yet for the remainder of this calendar year. So we will start to see those drop more this year, this calendar year, and then more expected next calendar year. So that will start to depress your interest earnings a little bit that you just heard about, very good report, very great interest earnings, but you probably will see that number start to come down, so lower interest earnings. That also then translates into if the county does decide you need to go out for another tax anticipation note, like you've done in the past, you know, albeit maybe for a smaller number, that should have a positive impact on that rate. So that should come down then as well. So there's sort of pros and cons when it comes to all that. And page, page four sort of highlights, it's what's called the dot plot. It's what a lot of the Wall Street experts are predicting for the Fed funds futures. So as I mentioned, that rate just decreased by half of, half a percent the last week, more expected. This just shows what the expectations are, but basically, the summary of this page is that by the end of next year, they're expecting the Fed funds rate to be between 4 and 4 1/4%. So that's about a full 1% decrease. So we do expect to start to see those rates come down a little bit more. So that's the short-term rate environment. Page five is a quick illustration of the long-term rate environment. So now, here, we care more about the long-term rates if the county had to do any other longer-term financing, say for capital. Or the good news, I'll talk about here in a little bit, there is an opportunity to refund some of the county's existing debt next year. So probably about next summertime, discussions could start being had on refinancing some existing debt. And when we talk about refinancing, that's not changing the amortization, that's not stretching it out or shortening, that's basically just keeping the same amortization and lowering the interest rate and achieving savings that the county's done in the past. But page five, again, is just illustration of the long-term rates. We do, if we kind of look in the, I'll say, the bottom left-hand corner of that chart, it shows what the current rate is, and about 64% of the time, rates have been higher than what we're showing here today. And this chart goes back to the early 90s. And this chart goes back to the early 1990s. So this is a ten-year municipal index, which closely correlates to when the county goes out to issue debt, what we use as a proxy. A lot of folks, when you go to do your own mortgage, you may use, say, the ten-year treasury as a proxy. Here, in the municipal world, we use the ten-year MMD or ten-year B-val index as that proxy. So again, we're a little bit lower than historical averages. We're not at the all-time lows that we saw a couple of years ago, but we're still below historical averages. So that's a, a brief update on the rate environment and future expectations. Page six, as far as the outstanding debt. So the county continues to pay down its debt. The rating agency does note that you have a pretty rapid pay-down, uh, as compared to other counties, so that's, that's a good thing. So on page six, looks at the direct debt of the county. Uh, you have a series of nineteen bonds, seventeen Bs, seventeen As, fifteen Bs, and fifteen As. Um, the nineteen bonds, they were actually, there was a rate modification done, I guess that was in 2021, when we were actually able to save the county a couple hundred thousand dollars by, by doing that. Um, the seventeen Bs and As, that's, those were for some refinancings that were done that saved, uh, the county some, uh, substantial amount of money. And the series fifteen A and Bs as well was a refinancing and some restructuring of some of the debt to, again, achieve, uh, a fair amount of present value savings. And then there's the 2017, um, county IDA bonds and a small Penn Vest loan. So all total, the direct debt down at the bottom is about a hundred and forty-two million dollars. And that's principal amount, that's not principal and interest, that's just principal amount.
Yeah, a question, so we're looking at paying down a hundred and forty-two million, not one hundred and twenty-four million? Is that correct?
Well, it's one hundred and twenty-four of direct debt, and then there's some lease rental debt that the county also guarantees, so that gets you to the total direct debt of about a hundred and forty-two.
Now, we've been talking for many months here about retiring all the debt by 2029 at some point.
Yep.
Is that include all of the hundred and forty-two million, or just the one twenty-four million?
That's all of it.
Good. Thank you.
That's all of it. And we'll have a graph show shortly that shows.
Thank you.
Shows that. You bet. And so speaking, that's a good segue into page seven. So, uh, on the left-hand, there's a couple of different exhibits on page seven, but exhibit A on the left-hand side shows the total debt service that the county is responsible for. Uh, and then you see, basically, 2029 is the last large year, and then 2030, there's just a small, uh, kind of small payment due in that year. So this reflects all the outstanding debt of the county. Uh, and exhibit B on the top right, that shows the borrowing capacity, so that's the legal limitation. There's obviously a difference between legally what the county can borrow and what may be financially prudent, kind of two different things. But as far as the remaining borrowing capacity as of just a, you know, a few weeks ago, the county had about six-hundred-and-eighty-four million of capacity that if you needed to borrow, we're not recommending you borrow that amount or anything else, but legally, you have that ability to, to do that.
Yeah, we don't want to talk about that.
So, so that's also a very good thing that the credit rating agency looks at, that you have a lot of capacity, that you're not even close to your, your capacity or your, your debt, debt limit. Uh, as far as exhibit C, you have a very traditional, uh, debt portfolio of now all fixed-rate debt and no variable-rate debt. And as far as the, the average rates of the county's debt in exhibit D, this reflects the, what's called the arbitrage yield of each one of the, the series. So the 2019 average rate's about a two-seventeen. The 2017 As and Bs' average rate's about a two-point-seven-nine. Seventeen and seventeen I- ICDAs, about a two-point-eight-six, and the fifteens, uh, in the three percent range. So the debt that the county does have outstanding, uh, is at a very good, uh, very good interest rate, so very low interest rate. So that's, that's good. And then to kind of show that graph in a slightly different format on page eight, this is now kind of more in a numerical format, like we kind of use more from a budgeting purpose. This just kind of lays out per calendar year all of the outstanding debt issues. Columns two and four, those are the two issues that become callable or refundable next year. So the one is callable on November fifteenth of next year, and the other one is December fifteenth. We're legally able to close about ninety days prior to, to those call dates, and so kind of when you back up in time, that could maybe be a, a summertime, kind of starting, at least the discussions, to see if it's worthwhile to, to move forward with anything. But as of right now, if rates kind of hold constant or even drop a little bit, there could be some substantial savings by refunding those, you know, maybe to the tune of a million dollars or, or so, uh, that you could realize by, again, just going from a higher rate to a lower rate. So nothing you can do now, you just, we just kind of have to wait until a little bit closer to, to the call date. And then there's some other call dates or refunding dates, uh, in 2027, that, you know, maybe the county could take advantage of as well. But again, this just kind of lays out the annual amount that's due each year, that's principal and interest in each one of those series, um, and then in, in totality. The county does also have on page nine, uh, two remaining interest rate swaps. So some of the swaps were terminated and matured years ago. There are two outstanding that we've been monitoring now for, for quite some time. There's only a few years left on those transactions, maybe a couple, uh, I believe it goes out three more years. If you want to terminate those now, you could basically get out at about a break-even. We're showing, uh, down in the, in the chart here, that it's about a negative ten-thousand-dollar cost to get out of the one, and about a negative ten-thousand-dollar cost to get out of the, uh, the other one. So, um, at this point, I still would not recommend getting out of it, it's more just watching it, because there's also cash flows that are occurring between the swap counterparties and the county, and right now, that's a positive impact on a financial basis. So I think it's one of those where, again, we just kind of continue to, to monitor. Um, but from a value standpoint, if you did, you know, want to entertain that idea, uh, it's probably one of the lower points that has been as far as that, you know, being able to terminate at more or less a, a break-even. But again, there is some positive cash flows that's coming to the county because of that. Uh, and then page 10, if the county does decide to go out for another tax anticipation note for 2025, um, process kind of needs to start relatively soon. So we're just saying here in October, start discussing the size of that, um, and then, uh, potentially an RFP, uh, that would be distributed in November, could be a potential resolution, uh, approved by the county, and then closing on January 2nd. And then on the right-hand side, shows the historical trend of the size of the tax anticipation notes. So we've been in a very good trend, kind of going down in size. Uh, you see the last one, that 2024 was eleven-and-a-half million, that's the last one, um, to date. So, you know, again, that's something, um, you know, happy to work with the administration on, and, uh, if it does, if, if the county does decide to go out, um, then there is a, you know, a little process to, to follow. And then lastly, from a credit rating perspective, so this has been, you know, always a, a good conversation that we've had with the county now for, for quite some time. The credit rating has, um, fluctuated a fair amount o- over the years. Right now, it is at the highest point that it's been. Uh, so on page 12 shows basically from two thousand, February of 2023 to basically now, the rating is a standard and pours A. And to kind of put that in perspective, the box over on the right-hand side shows the different rating categories, triple-A being the best, and then three subcategories in the double-A cat, uh, bracket, and then three subcategories in the A, um, A bracket. And so the county's sort of right in the middle there, and then there's three categories within the triple-B, and then you, then you go below investment grade. So right now, again, the county's at the highest it's been, at that A. It was an A-minus, uh, prior to that, uh, from 2017 to 19, it was a triple-B-minus, so it was just on the edge of investment grade. Uh, from fifteen to seventeen, it did drop down into non-investment grade, it was a double-B-plus. Um, and so, again, we've seen, you know, been with the county for quite some time, seeing, um, the different fluctuations of, of that rating. Obviously, that rating, um, is, is very good for the county when we're seeing it where it is right now. When it comes time to, to maybe doing a tax anticipation note, the banks look very favorable to that. If the county enters the, the bond market next year to refinance some debt, having a strong credit rating is, is very good. And so we just kind of highlight a couple of things on page 12 that the rating agency put down as far as ways the rating could improve. Obviously, the overall economy, grow and maintain reserves. Credit rating agencies love reserves just to have that, to have that cushion if necessary. Ways the rating could weaken, adopt structurally imbalanced budgets, reserves weaken materially, and short the pension contribution or unexpectedly issues debt. So that could potentially drop the rating, which could have some longer-term implications. And then on the, on page 13, um, uh, kind of an excerpt from the last credit rating, um, just thought it'd be worthwhile to mention. "We have upgraded Luzerne County, removed the rating cap due to the county's sustained structural balance, demonstrated willingness to raise taxes and fees, and proactive management of its pension plans. In the past, Luzerne County has suffered from a structural operating imbalance largely due to rising fixed costs and unmatched, unmatched revenue growth that resulted in negative unassigned general fund balance." So that was, you know, one of the statements they made last February. But when they do, when the rating agency does, um, their update to, to their credit, they look at a lot of different things. They obviously look at the reserves that you have, and they put a lot of emphasis in that. They look at how the budget has been adopted, and is it structurally balanced or not? And what goes into that is, uh, one of the key components is tax revenue. It's obviously a big component of the county's budget, and that is always, there's always a little bit of tension with that discussion, because you want to raise taxes, you not want to raise taxes, obviously, from a taxpayer standpoint, you want to keep taxes down. From a management standpoint, you know, you want to make sure the county is healthy, um, but not have excessive reserves. So the, right, credit rating agencies, they, you know, obviously, they, they, they need to, and they want to see the structurally balanced budgets. They do like to see the tax increases, they don't like to see overburdening the taxpayers, no doubt about it, but they do like to see the board's willingness to raise taxes when needed, and they cite it a couple of times. You know, 2020, I guess it was 2023, when taxes were increased, and the favorable improvements to the county's budget, uh, and how that was impacted. So, um, you know, again, a lot of stuff that, that, that goes involved in that, but it, it sort of encompasses everything, all the different revenue enhancements, one of those big things is taxes, expenditure reductions, wherever you can do that. Um, and, uh, you know, having substant- substantial reserves, which we kind of heard right before mine, that the county sitting on, you know, money at the moment, earning good interest, and so that obviously will help with future discussions, uh, when they come up. Overall, though, I think the county's in a good, good position with its debt, as far as the level of the debt service, the level of the overall debt, you know, paying down the debt rapidly, the good interest rates on the existing debt, and the flexibility that the county's going to be having over the next few years to be able to refinance any of that debt if the interest rates warrant, um, warrant doing so. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you very much, Scott. Any questions for council members? Mr. Haas?
Hey, Mr. Sherry, welcome back to Wilkes-Barre. Always a pleasure, and thanks for making everything so very clear. I personally appreciate.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your reports. I also remember the B-plus days, the double-B-plus days, and that was a, a terrible time to be in government, but, um, even the report on page 13, um, S&amp;P forgot that we got involved in that, that fixed-rate payer swap that put us in, on a trajectory of, of disaster, where the exponential debt servicing gone for our debt. So S&amp;P's always just a, kind of rubs me a little the wrong way, but, um, my questions are, do, do you really think it's, it's possible that we could really refinance a lot of this debt? It looks like, I mean, with the Fed, even if we have rate, rate decreases, and with the municipal debt rates the way they are, I, I don't see too much wiggle room there, because we already have really exceptional rates here.
You do have, you do have very low debt. Um, now, some of the, the coupons on the debt that have the call dates coming up soon are at either four or five percent. So when the bonds were sold, they were sold maybe with higher coupons but lower yields, what the investors wanted, and so I think there still will be an opportunity for the county to potentially save, save some money, uh, next year, even with where rates are today.
Wow.
Yep. And that's the importance of having those call features on the debt. So it's always easy to just say, well, we're going to go issue debt, and we're going to make it non-callable, because it makes it a lot easier to, to sell. Investors love to, to go buy non-callable debt. But we've always pitched very hard to, whether it's through the RFP process, or negotiating with a bank, or, uh, an underwriter, to make sure that there is a call feature that the county can eventually take advantage of and hopefully refinance some debt. So I am optimistic that you will be able to realize some savings next, next year.
I thought we resolved all the callable debt. Was that in response to the 911 borrowing from a few years ago?
Well, 911 borrowing is, that's callable any time, uh, with the debt instrument that we did.
Is that what that's talking about then?
Well, so the, the ones that we're looking at for next year, if you go back to page eight, it's the fifteen As, which that was, you know, to one of your earlier points, that was one of the series that we did back in 2015 that terminated, uh, the one swap, that, you know, we went through a lot of work on that. And then the 2017 IDA bonds, um, there were a couple of transactions done in 2017 to, to refinance some debt. And again, at that point, even those transactions were still relatively short, we still made sure to put a, a ten-year call feature on those so that, you know, we could have conversations in the future about refinancing them if the market conditions all line up correctly.
Thank, I don't remember that, so thank you very much. That's fantastic. Uh, two other ones, too. So the, the TRAN amounts there, and we're looking, I'll, I can put that on page 10, too. I mean, just here, you heard our finance director talk about, or division manager, rather, talk about how we have a ninety-four percent collection rate, which I'm sure you probably agree across the country is a pretty good collection rate.
Very good.
So do you, do you anticipate us really shrinking on that TRAN, knowing our, our recent past?
Well, I'll defer to the, to the county on that. I mean, there's, there's cash flow worksheets that need to be done to justify it, so I think the best-case scenario is that you would not need one. Um, that would, that would clearly be the best.
That's what I was thinking.
Um, you know, maybe you just need even a smaller one. The, the county's been in a great trend, going from, say, twenty million down to eighteen, seventeen, and then eleven and a half. So, you know, if the county does need one, you know, maybe it'll be smaller, but that's something that we'll need to go through some of those cash flow worksheets to be able to justify to the IRS that if, that you do, in fact, need one. You just can't go kind of do one just because you have to be able to justify it through all the various legal documents. So, um, yeah, best-case scenario is, I'm not back, because you don't need, you don't need to do one. That's what we like to see. It's a great, it's a great sign, that's a great sign.
Love to see that, yes, indeed. We like that trajectory. Thank you so much. The last question I have, then, is looking at, at ways we can, um, we would weaken, it's on page 12, everybody, for the council members, how we would decrease our, our credit rating. So, um, I, I think this is a question for Ms. Rozelle as well, but where are we at with our pension contribution? Because that, that really was low once upon a time, we've been, we've been clawing our way back.
Yeah, I think that's been, the, the county's been hitting the, the target number on that, I, I believe. I don't think there's been any issues recently on that, so everything's been going good.
Ms. Thornton, you want to make a comment on that?
But we still have a deficit, I think, right, of, of the overall?
Our, our obligation, uh, as chair of the retirement board, our obligations have been met every year that I'm here in the last three years. So we're in very good shape with the pension, I just want everybody in the county to know, and the employees to know that.
With the GASB requirements, are we, are we on target with the?
Yes.
The, the, in general?
Yep.
Getting everything looking real good from that perspective.
Yep.
Very nice. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have a discussion regarding the Butler Township Farm leases.
Uh, we are reviewing, uh, all of our leases, and, uh, we'll be reviewing, uh, the Butler, uh, farm, uh, leases as well.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Anybody?
Will we be RFP-ing, uh, like, for new people to lease land eventually?
Uh, we'll discuss the options, but that's what we're leaning towards. I mean, historically, these leases actually are from handshakes, uh, years ago, uh, and, uh, we're reviewing them.
One, one thing that was mentioned, uh, when, when David Pedry was the manager, they did put them out for RFP. There was really no one that was interested in them, but Mr. Sabatino and I talked, and he believes that there may be somebody that's interested in paying more than what we're getting on that now. But the lease just needs to be updated, even if there wasn't a, no amount change.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Moving on, discussion regarding the ordinance affirming protection for election workers from intimidation, harassment, and assault, and enhancing collaboration with the Luzerne County District Attorney's Office. Council members, um, there is the original ordinance is the first one, and it is, it's obviously, um, labeled as such. And then there's the revised ordinance, and I had asked for some of the revisions to be highlighted. Um, they're both in the agenda packet, and, um, Ms. Smith, since it's your ordinance, I don't know if you want to go over some of the changes, and can you tell us a little bit about some of the discussions you've had with the departments that have been affected or will be affected by this?
So as you can see, uh, the most updated version is the thirteenth. Uh, recognizing that we can't amend it here, but in the interest of time, especially today, I wanted to use all to have the most updated ordinance, so the thirteenth is the final. Um, the first change is they, the original ordinance discussed difficulties, and rather than acknowledging difficulties, um, we wanted to enhance the administration's initiatives and show a sign of support there. Then the entirety of any involvement with the district attorney has been removed. I, we would not be able to do that, uh, in my research, and... And then we asked for an encouragement for documentation that is new. The administration is encouraged to implement a policy to systematically document any incidents of intimidation, harassment, or assault against election workers. The policy should ensure any such documentation involves detailed descriptions of the incidents and any available evidence that could support legal proceedings. Again, this is an encouragement because I am not intending to tell the administration how to do its job. That is not the point of this ordinance in any way, shape, or form. It is to support the administration. So if they so choose, that might be a good thing for them to do. So this government has been entrusted with safeguarding the rights and safety of those upholding democracy through the electoral process. And in fact, we've seen in the past that the executive and judicial branches have been called upon in recent memories. And now I call upon the legislative branch of our local government to do exactly that. Some interesting context here, there are existing state and federal laws that provide protections, but local measures are increasingly necessary because there are holes in the state and federal laws. We have had challenges. We know this with significant turnover. And in fact, 2022 survey included, indicated that one in three election officials knew someone who left their position due to safety concerns. And I believe that it was Manager Crocomo and our current elections director, Emily Cook, who were on CBS News discussing the threats that Emily has had, that Ms. Cook has had, that were very scary and discussing the need for election workers protections and that this is a very serious issue. I also believe that same news report cited that over one-third of election workers have left their position since 2020, which leads to an enormous loss of institutional knowledge. And we all know how important institutional knowledge is. We need it to run the Bureau. This administration does a great job with a very difficult job. This ordinance is to support the administration and the job they do and to just, to tell people that this kind of behavior is not tolerated and to tell our employees that we are there to support them. It's also to tell the administration that we are there to support them. Some key provisions that I have here, it expands the definition of election officials to include volunteers, temporary staff, and others involved in the election process beyond just poll workers. In the federal and state, in the federal and state laws, it's just poll workers. That's one of the gaps it fills. Another large gap is doxxing. Does anybody know what doxxing is? It's when there's maliciously, you maliciously post personal information, like addresses. And certainly as county employees, our names are available, certainly, but our addresses and phone numbers and other personal information is not. And that can be very scary when you're in a position like an election worker. And it also outlines clear prohibitions against interference, intimidation, retaliation, and harassment of election workers, aligning these protections with the Pennsylvania Crimes Code as well as the Election Code. And I would make a big note here that the behavior that this ordinance aims to protect our election workers against is not protected speech under the First Amendment. This is not intended to curtail First Amendment speech. Of course, we always have the right to peacefully protest, and I will protect that, especially as an attorney. But make no mistake about it, this behavior is not protected by the First Amendment. And in fact, there are multiple crimes codes that prevent exactly this kind of behavior. It does not specifically talk about election workers, but there's certainly a criminal statute against, against harassment. We have definitions. We know it is not protected speech. So that argument is not applicable here. So in conclusion, the point of this ordinance is to protect, is to emphasize a proactive stance to ensure election workers are safe and respected. And it also highlights the duty to protect election workers as fervently as they protect the votes and the voices of Luzerne County. I've sat here tonight listening to this argument over drop boxes and that they were taken away because they were a safety concern. It is simply illogical and nonsensical to say in the same breath that drop boxes need to go because they're a safety concern, but we don't need an election ordinance to protect our own workers from any safety concerns. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one or two questions. Reading through this ordinance, I'm just, you know, I know you spoke a little bit about, I guess you did, but I, I just, I'm kind of wondering what exactly this ordinance is, is physically doing, except for saying, hey, election workers, we got your back?
It's physically making it a punishable offense to harass them, to threaten them, to dox them. Read it. It's in the ordinance.
Is that not, is that not something that's already protected under the law by any individual?
Not state and federal law.
You, you can't harass an individual anytime?
That's a criminal law.
Right.
This is not a criminal law. This is a local ordinance. There's a difference.
Okay. So if they were a poll worker, they could be harassed today, but in two weeks, if we pass this, they can't be harassed anymore by anybody? I mean, it makes, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
No. Why would you think that?
That's what you're, seem to be insinuating.
Not at all.
Okay. All right. And did you speak to any of the departments that would be affected by this? Have you spoken with the county manager and the?
No, I have not spoken with the county manager.
Department of Elections?
I have not spoken with the, well, I've not spoken with the Department of Elections. I've not spoken with the county manager. I found that there was a need for this and I moved forward.
Did you ask them if they wanted it?
No.
Okay.
But I don't believe that we might get any, and I don't believe that there is always...
There was a, there was a, there was an email that was sent out by Ms. Cook several days ago.
There was, and there's also been other statements by Ms. Cook that state a different story. So I also believe that it's important because I think there may be some intimidation simply being in this position. This is a very difficult position right now. We've seen how much people are responding to this kind of thing. We saw it here tonight.
There were citizens voicing their opinions tonight.
Yes.
On both sides of the issue. I didn't see any intimidation or...
I didn't, I, that's not what I said. I said, people respond to this.
Okay. Go ahead. Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So of course, I think everyone around this table and in this room fully support protecting people from intimidation and harassment. My couple of concerns I have, this ordinance strongly affects two divisions in the county, two departments, the Bureau of Elections and the District Attorney's Office, who would be prosecuting and bringing charges against people.
If they so chose. So that's important to remember.
Is my understanding that you have not discussed this with our district attorney, Sam Sangadulci? You haven't discussed this?
No, not at all. And in fact...
Have you discussed it with Emily Cook, the director of our Bureau of Elections?
Because it's a local ordinance, it would be brought by the police.
Yes.
It wouldn't be brought by the DA.
So you didn't run it by the DA or Emily Cook, the director of Elections, the Bureau?
I have two statements from Emily Cook that are different.
Okay. But you personally had conversations with her regarding the ordinance? Or were the emails or...
Depends on what you mean, person.
Well, you picked up the phone or you met her and you talked to her directly, or you picked up the phone and discussed it with her?
No, I did not speak with her.
Okay. And the other thing that does concern me, I'll be honest with you. First of all, I'm under the belief that laws such as harassment, intimidation already exist, okay, and protect people. I'm concerned with the penalties that are imposed by this ordinance.
Under Title VIII, Section 3122?
Yeah. Let me just finish my point, please. I read a $1,000 penalty, and if the person can't pay, they can spend up to 90 days in jail. My problem with a lot of this kind of dialogue is that it introduces what I like to refer to as the thought police. In other words, when someone goes to a polling place and is upset about something, and maybe it's a valid concern, and they yell or scream about something that happened to them or their ballot, blah, 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 someone in that polling place could say, he's intimidating me, or she's harassing me. Now, what one person deems as harassment or intimidation, another person would say in the same room, no, those are valid concerns. Those are very legitimate concerns. Well, according, when I read this, and I read it, if someone deems that language as harassing or intimidation, charges could be forthcoming. And if that person can't spend or come up with a thousand bucks, a person who may have been upset and concerned about their ballot or lost whatever, could end up spending 90 days in jail, legitimate, law-abiding citizen. And that's why I, I, coming out, not supporting this. I'm all for protecting workers, but not in this manner.
Vice Chair, what you're referring to is a slippery slope argument. And if you've studied philosophy and logic, you know that slippery slope argument is a logical fallacy. We already have harassment statutes, as we already discussed. There's already been definitions of harassment. That's not how this would work. That's not how any statute works. It would be under the, it would be within the discretion of any police officer or law enforcement officer that was called, just like every other crime is. And this is not even under a criminal statute. This is simply a local ordinance. And if you read Title VIII, like I said, and I believe it's Section 3122, the penalties for a local ordinance in a, in this way are $1,000 and up to 90 days in jail, which is exactly what it is for a summary offense.
I understand, but I don't see that language in here, that it could only be enforced by a local police officer or law enforcement. That's an absence in here.
That's enforced as local ordinances, though.
Well, I think it could be enforced by the poll workers themselves that are saying they were harassed.
That's not how it...
File a complaint.
Okay. They can file a complaint. Any one of us could file a complaint.
Right.
I mean, I could feel harassed by something that Leanne or Ms. McDermott said tonight.
Right. And now, and now they have an ordinance that says if they feel they were harassed or intimidated, okay, let's go to the cops and get this guy handcuffs. Yeah, I, I just...
You still have to go to the authority.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And it's still their discretion, just like any other...
I understand. I respect your opinion. I'm just saying, I'm coming out against it, but thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other discussion? Mr. Haas?
I, I have one. And John, I love you, but I can't support this either. And I'm going to give you a couple of stories. I was able to serve as a judge of elections for, through many election cycles. And one, I, I don't know what election it was, 2022, maybe, we had the, the machines, the, the time date was not correct on the machine, right? So the machine operator opened it up, I looked at it, I'm like, oh my gosh. But it was too late to rectify it because a voter had already gone to the machine. The voter got upset. And, you know, I was upset. And things happen, human error happens, and we fixed that problem. But just like I know what Mr. Thornton was talking about, I can't, I don't ever want to put somebody in a position where they're voicing their, their degree of, of, I don't want to say disgust, but the, the guy was upset and he had a right to be upset because it just looked, it looked bad, right? So myself, as a judge of elections, I thought we ought to contact the, the Bureau, and we got it worked out, and everybody was satisfied. But it just, it's incumbent that our, our election workers, they're, they're doing public service, we have to be trained. But I also had a very competent constable there. And the constable is the legal authority in the polling place. So we have, there, there are systems in place to protect our polling workers. Another situation was this guy came in with a mask on. It was like Halloween. You didn't know who this guy was. And I, I looked at my constable and he looked at me and, and we're like, how do we deal with this? Right? So ask the voter, please remove your mask so we can identify you so you can, you can vote, right? Correct? You can't just have random come on the street. He said, oh, I've voted many times. Nobody ever asked me to do that before. And he complied. It, it turned out it was really okay, but these things happen. And again, a very good relationship with your constable is, I think, worth any legislation we can possibly pass, anything we have in Harrisburg. Elections are run by the local people. And that's how we keep our elections fair and free. We have to keep it local. We can keep the fraud out of the way. We can keep the community intact if we really keep it the local level. And I think we, I think we're, we're better if we encourage people to serve and to, to participate in the community. And I think we just lost that with this whole, this debate, the discussion over these past few years. We've had a couple very high-profile people, the courts, and some very loud people that just upset what's been the case for, for like a very long time, a very long time. We've, we've had very successful elections. So I, I can't support this for that. I understand where you're coming from, but I think the discussion is warranted. I think this is the place to have it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ma'am, by making this a local ordinance, I am trying to keep it local. And this is just another option for any local authority to use. This would actually be lower than the harassment statute that we have now. For example, I, our assault statute is simply, you can commit simple assault simply by making someone afraid you're going to assault them. Who defines that? All statutes are a little ambiguous. That's why courts interpret them. But we do have interpretation of these kinds of, these kinds of incidents. And like I mentioned before, it's not something that anyone can just say, I'm going to prosecute this on my own. Local ordinances are enforced by the police. So there would be a third-party neutral arbiter who looks at the situation and, as we know from our police, takes a very two-sided look at it, looks at it from afar, away from the emotions of what's happening, and makes a rational decision. We entrust our police to do that with our crimes code. I entrust our authorities to do that with this. Our local authorities. I, I'm with you. I think it's important we keep it local. And I think it's important that we protect our election workers. Our own county manager, like I said, and our own election bureau director of elections went on CBS News to discuss how very threatened election workers are. And it's very sad. And when I took an oath, I promised to do the best for Luzerne County. And I believe this is the best for Luzerne County. And I want to do the best for our workers and our, best for our elections. And while people certainly can protest, Chair, by all means, let's keep it peaceful.
Mr. Haas?
I think if we, if we really want the, the public to have free and fair elections, I think we should encourage them to sign on to the, our election board posts, minority, majority inspector of elections, judges of elections, machine workers, and constables. This is how we make it work. And I think that would be a, a very good route to take. Doesn't take any legislation, we just encourage that. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Uh, very quickly, uh, thank you.
Oh, uh, can you use your mic? Sorry.
It's been a long one.
It's been a long night. Joanna, thank you very much. I, I appreciate what you did and I appreciate your, your compassion to, to what you put into words. My only concern is, all right, Mrs. Keen, did you get a, a chance to review this?
We're awake now.
Well, what is your concern about? Are you okay with it?
There are some issues depending on how we're going to handle it, if it's something that we could be, that we could have administration do. It says it's encouraged, so if it's encouraged, administration could do it or not do it. There's no, right now, if there's any complaints about any problems at polling places, they keep record of that as it is. So I don't know what we are to do or what the Bureau of Elections is to do. They're not prosecutors. So the most they could do is if anybody makes a complaint to them directly, they could just take that information and give it to the district attorney's office. I don't think them collecting evidence is something that the district attorney wants. They generally do their own investigation. They're not going to want untrained, people untrained in criminal prosecution to keep that evidence, collect that evidence, and hand it over to them. So I don't know what the district attorney's position is. I haven't spoken to him about it.
That's amendable.
The...
Doesn't change the intent.
The, it's up to council with the first and the next ordinance has been changed substantially. The, it's up to council with the first and the next ordinance has been changed substantially. And the first one was initiated, there was four votes, there was four votes to introduce it, and now if it's deemed to have had a significant enough change, it would have to be reintroduced for the newest one. And that could happen at the next meeting on the voting agenda.
Attorney Skeen, who, who would deem that as a significant enough change? I, personally, I don't really know that it is, but who, who would, who would determine that? Would it be us? Council?
Yes, I mean, it's...
Is that microphone over there?
Always fair enough.
I think it's, I think it's just your microphone, yeah. That's a loud jacket, causing a loud interference in the mic. I'm so sorry, Harry, I'm so sorry. That's, that's, next time I wear one, you can say that to me.
That, that could be the case. I don't usually talk, so it's, it's new. Yeah, it was, it was, it was a change, so when we put it out for the residents to see the first time, it was a lot different than this time. Now, since this one was published, you know, we may not get complaints from the public if you vote on it, but you still have to do a vote to amend, right? Because it was already introduced. So with the vote to amend, you'll need six votes to get it to amend, and then you have to vote on it to pass it.
Okay. Just sort of logistically, not about this ordinance in particular, but in general, when, you know, we're writing legislation, that's one of the things that I, I've asked, is if we can just make sure that the Office of Law gets a chance to review these things, and that, you know, when they're done, they're done properly in form, and, you know, the departments have been consulted and things like that. And, you know, what, this was added, and I, I understand that there were some revisions that were made based on some public comments that were made, myself, the District Attorney, and, and, and the Elections Director, and that's, that's good. But that's just one of the reasons why it's really important that council members are, are bringing their legislation to the Office of Law and making sure that it's reviewed before it comes here. And I bear some of the responsibility on this because it was brought to my attention probably within that time period where it could have been placed onto the agenda, not violating the Sunshine Law, but it, it was certainly past the, the time when, when it, the agenda came out. So, go ahead.
The newest version, we did review. That was given to us in, in plenty of time in advance.
Sure.
The first one was just, you know, came in at a work session, so we hadn't seen it.
That was just my misunderstanding of the charter. But I would like to note for the Sunshine Act, I don't believe that this has changed too much because it's the same topic.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's, I personally don't think it's an issue, that's why I specifically asked for both versions of the, of the ordinance with the amend, the amended version and the highlights and all that to be on this agenda so that members of the public can read all of, all of these changes and what the difference was between the first and the second, and that's why, sort of why I asked you to begin with that in the beginning. Yeah. So, anybody else, any other comments, questions?
I, I appreciate any support for election workers, which includes not only our staff, but our poll workers and judges of elections, but the administration will have a response before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Right, which is why I wanted to make it very clear, this was not in any way to tell the administration that they're doing a bad job. In fact, it was a way to support the administration and our workers because they are doing a good job with a very difficult job. Great job with a very difficult job.
Thank you. I think we all agree that they're doing a good job, and they certainly need the support, and, you know, council's happy to give them the support whenever we can. Any other questions, comments? All righty, moving on. Last topic, I hope. Review the 2025 budget meeting schedule, which is in the back of your packet. It's slightly different than it sometimes has been in the past, where we would have these budget work sessions on different evenings than council meetings. Sometimes we would have them on council meeting nights, other nights we would not have them on those, those nights. But all of these are going to be on, I believe they're all on regular council voting session and work session nights. So, you know, the, the meetings may extend a little bit longer, hopefully not as long as this one, but they'll extend a little bit longer into the evening, so, you know, make sure we're prepared, particularly for the particular divisions that will be at those meetings. So make sure that you've reviewed that section of the budget, and if you have any questions for those specific administrators, that's an awesome time to ask those questions because they can come there and they can review things line item by line item with you, and, you know, in the meantime, if you have any questions for them before the meeting or in the interim, I have found that personally, just reaching out to them via email or something like that and saying, hey, is this line item, why you need $10,000 for it when you needed $8,000 last year, or something like that, they'll usually give you an answer, one, two, three. So, does anybody have any questions on the actual schedule itself? Go ahead.
Well, no, I was just going to say, it's not every week, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing that, and we just need to bring our snacks.
Yeah, exactly.
Make sure we're prepared for that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to commend Budget Finance Director Ms. Mary Rosell and Accounting Manager Ramil de Croquemont for getting this budget together as quickly as they are, putting it out in a, in a very timely manner, and employing an efficient use of everyone's time by having it on those council meeting nights. So, thank you to both of you.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas, you had a comment?
I was going to make a motion adjourned, but I think we need public comment.
Oh, yeah, we need, we, we do need public comment, yes, we do. Anybody, well, if there's no other comments, public comment, go ahead, Mr. Shapiro.
I'm glad you learned my name. Gaby Shapiro Kingston. Am I permitted to ask questions, or no?
You're permitted to address the council as a whole, the comments have to come through the chair. If you have questions, you can certainly state the questions, but the council doesn't really have to respond. So just if you want to state your questions, use your time, and then if a council member feel, wants to respond, or, you know, whatever, they, they are, they can, but just you have to address your comments to the chair, though.
So, Councilwoman Smith, I, I wanted to...
You have to address your comments to the chair.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Smith stated XYZ.
Got it, sorry. Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Smith stated that she, she pointed to the me, earlier meeting tonight as some sort of proof or evidence of the need for this ordinance. I guess my question would be, is, was any of the behavior that happened tonight, you know, there was no violence, was any of that be considered, considered under threat or intimidation, or any, any, or harassment? You know, I, I think that's what it's targeting here. I think it's, we, there's, everyone's noticed that there's been an uptick in, in, at least in the Republican Party, in local involvement from, from various different people in all different areas, and I think that this, that this ordinance is a reaction to that. It's, it's an acknowledgement, and it's like, oh, well, actually now we need to give pushback. And it's, you know, we, we, we've heard a lot tonight about the word disenfranchisement. I think that this is meant to disenfranchise the people who have recently gotten involved, and to tell them, if you make anyone feel a certain way, well, then you're going to be facing a thousand dollar fine, which many cannot afford, either or 90 days of imprisonment, and essentially is there to, to make us scared of being involved and scared of voicing our opinion. To the best of my knowledge tonight, I don't think there was, you know, there were some people talking out of turn, which you addressed, but to the best of my knowledge tonight, there was nobody threatening, harassing, you know, or intimidate, or at least intimidating that I, that I saw. So I think this is meant to, to essentially create a thought crime and is codified into law in this county, which, which the District Attorney will be required to prosecute and address. And I think that, you know, everyone behaved tonight in accordance with the First Amendment, which you, Chairman, Chair acknowledged, and I appreciate that. And I, I think that, you know, we, that's all the intention of, of all of us is to continue behaving in that way, and I respectfully request that you, once again, reject this ordinance because it's here to create thought crime in this county, and we have our First Amendment right, and we utilized it tonight, and we will continue doing so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? We have one hand up on the Zoom, Mark, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo of Hazleton speaking. First of all, I wanted to end off my previous public comment by saying, Mr. Chair, that the end of the story when it came to my mother's country of Czechoslovakia, and how it ended when the useful idiots heckled and persecuted their fellow citizens, it ended up as being, using a ballot drop box, being stuffed by non-citizens coming from the Soviet Union. And then the communists took over the national government, and therefore in 1948, February of 1948, the communists ransacked the, the country, and took over lands, private property, eliminated First Amendment rights. Human rights were pretty much out the window. So I don't want to see that happen in my home county, and I don't think you guys want to see it in our county either. And to address the point by, for the ordinance by Councilwoman Brent Smith that brought, was brought up tonight, Mr. Chair, she brought up the point about the crimes as far as the crimes code and sentencing guidelines. I would just like to inform County Council, and I do believe Mr. Skeen and Manager Croquemont know this, that the Commission on Sentencing determines the sentencing guidelines and as far as fines and fees that are initiated, that are to be given by the George, or the judges, excuse me, the state judges, from our common pleas judges to our Supreme Court judges. So I think this is an overreach by Councilwoman Smith in terms of the Constitution under Article 9, Section 2, last sentence, that the municipality with the Home Rule Charter shall not supersede the laws that apply throughout the state, the Home Rule Charter nor the Constitution at any time. So, I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and the Vice Chairman to confer with the District Attorney, maybe even the Court Administrator, and also the state, especially maybe Senator Lisa Baker, who chairs the Senate Judiciary Committee and her office. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.